Welcome to the Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 meeting, regular business meeting of the Radnor Township School District. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is the report on executive sessions. I can report that the board met this evening in executive session on April 22nd, 2025 to discuss property tax settlements, contract negotiations with our maintenance group, a legal matter involving a former student, and a legal matter involving a former employee. The next item on the agenda is always the most fun. We're going to do our report from students. Martina, do you mind if we start with the elementary school student since he's here? Okay, thank you. We actually have a special guest. We have a wonderful high school student who joins us every month, but we've started cycling in some special guests from our other schools. So this evening, we are welcoming Houda LaBrowie from our Radnor Elementary School. Welcome, Houd. Come on up to the front. Make sure that there should be a light on the microphone, I think. Just speak so make sure we hear you.
Uh, hello?
Perfect, thank you.
Do I start? Hello, my name is Houda LaBrowie, and I am a fifth grader at Radnor Elementary School. I am thrilled to be here tonight to share the exciting things happening at RES. Radnor is a very special place, and I am excited to tell you why. Our kindergarten students have been studying plants and science. They have had lots of fun watching their mother's gift, day gifts grow in the sun. They started from a seed. They have been busy planning a six-day countdown to summer. They will close out kindergarten with the popsicle party. Our first graders had an assembly where they learned all about the life of Betsy Ross on May 15th. They will be going on a field trip to the Camden Aquarium. They will have fun learning all about the marine life. And in just a few short weeks, they will begin their ABC countdown, where they have a different theme each day that takes them right up to the end of school. Our second graders have been really busy as well. Second grade also participated in an all-grade assembly called Rhythmetrics, which combines music, mindfulness, and movement to help regulate our nervous system. Sounds like fun. In science, they studied different types of soil, composting, and plants. In math, the second graders are learning strategies to add and subtract three-digit numbers. In April, they spent time focusing on the vivid language of poetry as we celebrate National Poetry Month. They are really looking forward to Field Day. The third grade students had a nice field trip to the Radnor Historical Society. They had a fantastic day learning about the history around our community. They were able to see a real Conestoga wagon on other Victorian-style clothes and decor. They are very much looking forward to walk through Wayne. It is always an exciting trip, connecting to our history and economics curriculum, and a great way to build community. In science, they explored plant growth and development with the traditional creation of bees. In January, they welcomed a palontologist. He came with Mr. Nixon, which was a Triceratops fossil. The students had hands-on experience with the mud dig. They were able to find different rocks, minerals, and fossils. In fourth grade, the students have started to rehearse for their chorus concert, which will be held in June. This is always a fun way to end our school year. In math, they are learning about decimal concepts, measuring, measurement, and geometry. The students will soon be traveling to each region of the United States to learn about the geography, history, and economics. I remember doing this in Ms. Kelly's class. I learned so much about the northeast region of the United States. There have been exciting things happening in fifth grade this year. In ELA, we are reading a novel, Esperanza Rising. In math, we have been working through solving fractions and challenging word problems. We are now into geometry and algebra thinking. In science, we have been using microscopes. We observed microorganisms and also learned about buoyancy and determined what makes an object float or sink. We also had a field trip to Flux Base, where we worked on STEM projects. In just a few weeks, we are setting off for Camp Canidensis. We are really excited to meet new friends from the other elementary schools. Every year before spring break, the school celebrates Pineapple Day, where we all take the pineapple pledge as a reminder to be kind, including others and help anyone who needs it. It feels great to make a difference together. I think it's safe to say that everyone enjoyed Pineapple Day. It was so much fun watching the cereal box challenge and the domino effect created by the hundreds of boxes collected. RES collected almost 1,000 cereal boxes to donate to the Wayne Food Pantry. In physical education, students are wrapping up our much-loved Wacky Track Unit, a longstanding tradition at RES. The experience blends movement and fun with skill buildings, and students have loved teaming up with their wellness classes for extra time with peers. Beyond the fun, activities like hanging on the parallel bars help build core strength that supports stamina for academic tasks such as sustained writing. Ideas is gearing up for our annual STEM fair, happening on May 20th, in collaborating with our amazing PTO. We're thrilled to welcome Radnor High School students who will provide inspiration and hands-on support, especially for students who might be more hesitant to dive into STEM. A special thank you to Dominic Elia President, RHS Chemistry Club, for his leadership. Mrs. Dean and our students, artists, are preparing for Earth Day with a special project, Bee Inspired Wind Chimes. This ties into the current third-grade art unit and honors our identity as a green school. Each year, the RES community contributes to the soundscapes of Earth Day by creating beautiful wind chimes. And we can't wait for the students to arrive on April 22nd to the gentle music of their creations. Teachers were also invited to create their very own bee wind chime. We're thrilled to invite families to our beloved Museum Night on Wednesday, May 1st. The halls of RES will be transformed into a galaxy showcasing the incredible artwork of our students. It's a beautiful celebration of creativity, and we hope to see you there as we honor our young artists. April is National Poetry Month, and students have been diving into rhythm, rhyme, and rich language in the library. We're also looking forward to a special author visit at the end of the month. Mrs. Pichado is preparing students to find joy in reading beyond this school year. With May focused on building excitement around summer leisure reading, our fifth-grade musicians are hitting all the right notes. Several students will perform at Radnor Middle School in the combined chorus and string concert. And if you had the opportunity to perform at our digestive breakfast, an incredible honor. And we're still beaming from the success of this year's musical Annie. We're already looking ahead with excitement about our fourth and fifth-grade concerts. As I previously said, stated, RES is an amazing school filled with so many exciting events and opportunities. I have enjoyed every minute of my time here and will truly miss it when my family returns to Oman in June. RES is a very special place, and I am so lucky to have been a part of this school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Houd. The RES reports are always one of my favorites because my children went through that school. And I remember a lot of those events. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
We have a certificate for him that I think Mrs. Brennan is going to give you. If you stay after, I think she'll get a picture with you and your parents outside. And next, we have Martina. I always get your name, Besseril.
Yes, good job.
Welcome, Martina.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. Throughout the month of April, we had lots of celebrations. Let's start with the French trip. Our RHS French students had the chance to journey into France over spring break. They explored Avignon, marvelled at iconic Parisian landmarks, and stepped into prehistoric times at the Lazoo Caves. They definitely came back with more than just souvenirs. They brought back memories and cultural experiences. Meanwhile, RHS German students weren't traveling, but they were absolutely dominating the national German exam, taking home 20 medals. On a similar note, RHS Latin students also dominated the national Latin exam. Switching gears to sports. Boys tennis had their annual senior night on April 9th, honoring and congratulating the senior athletes. Moreover, junior tennis player Max Billerman qualified for the PIAA district championships. Still in the realm of sports, the girls' ice hockey team, who are now officially four-peat champs of the Mainline Cup. With a big win over Lower Marion, they brought it home once again. That's grit, teamwork, and a whole lot of Radnor pride on the ice. Over in the world of academics and businesses, Radnor FBLA had an amazing showing, with eight students placing in the top 10, and not one, but two first-place finishes. On the topic of achievements, let's take a moment to thank the amazing partnership between Giant Food Stores and their Feeding School Kids program. Since 2021, this initiative has raised over $7.5 million to help families in need. And just recently, Radnor received a $7,160 check from the St. David's Giant. A huge thank you to their team and to every single community member who rounded up at the registry and those small acts that made a huge difference. Moving on to the club side of Radnor, I want to give a huge thank you to you all who donated to the Latinx Club Aclamo Donation Drive. Thanks to your generosity, we collected more items than we even expected. All of the donations went directly to supporting underprivileged Latino families in our communities, and your contributions truly made a difference. And last, but surely not least, Haikyuu had their banquet to close off their amazing season. So whether we're immersing ourselves in the French language, scoring goals, acing national exams, or giving back to the community, Radnor students are showing up, shining bright, and making us proud every single day. So I thank you all and hope you have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martina. Okay, next item on the agenda is the report from our superintendent. Follow that.
Good evening. I won't be able to follow that. Our students did a great job. So it's always great to hear all the wonderful things happening in our buildings at different levels as well. Very quickly tonight for my remarks, I just want to share, first off, congratulations to our business manager, Brian Pauling. Brian just received an additional certification that he didn't even need to go after, but he continues to go above and beyond. And I'm going to be in trouble for doing this, but I just wanted to recognize you for all that you do. And it'll make up for when we have to discuss the budget later, though, Brian. But congratulations, Mr. Pauling, for all that you do for the district. And then I just want to mention to our community and to our school board, we had a chance at the facilities meeting to briefly look at this. As part of our project, our accessibility project at the high school, one of the final phases to that project was looking at identifying and recognizing all our different athletic accomplishments throughout the district, and specifically actually at the high school, those athletic accomplishments, and then placing those in areas around our building, inside the building, in the gym, outdoor, by the track, on the gates. And it's really, I just want to thank the high school administration, our athletic department, our communications department, help support from the district office, and the operations department for making that happen. It really has transformed the campus even more, and it's just wonderful to see. And then I just want to also mention, we had a great opportunity recently, and I want to thank our transportation department. Our transportation department is really pretty amazing. Besides transporting our kids and running three bus runs every day, we have mechanics on site. They do all the work on our buses on site. There's a lot of districts that have to ship out that type of work or contract that out. We have that work done on site. Many school districts come to our transportation department to certify their drivers, the tests, in order to become a driver. Our transportation department handles that for other districts as well. We'll come and do the certification and testing in our transportation department. And we had some students who recently asked, they wanted to learn more. And I want to thank the high school administration and our teachers for setting that up. I was lucky enough to be able to join them, and they got an exciting tour of not only how the bus runs work, how they set up the routes, how they coordinate, but also it was a lot of details about what it takes to keep a bus up and running, all the requirements. Our students asked a lot of tough questions. There's a lot of things that I wasn't aware of. And I feel like I've been paying attention with the transportation department, but how many miles does a tire last? And what does it take to change those things? So it was really a great opportunity, and I want to thank our transportation department. And I also want to just do a little challenge to the rest of our administrative team. You know, we are, in many ways, a small business. We have a transportation department. We have a business office. We have a technology department. We've tried to start offering more opportunities for some of our students to maybe intern, or opportunities for them to learn more about those departments. So this is one step towards trying to open up and give those opportunities for our students as we move forward, but it was a great day. And then moving on, just quickly, upcoming events. This is the time of year where things just move very quickly. That end of the year is around the corner. Spring break is behind us now, and you can see from this list, there's a lot of exciting things happening. And that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bachelor. Next, we come to another fun part of our evening when we get to recognize students for the great things that they're doing. And the first item on the agenda is the RHS Varsity Girls Basketball District Champions. I think Ms. Rosenbloom and Mr. Thornton were going to present these awards. We're actually going to wait and do the certificates at the end because we find that simpler, but if you guys want to go down and shake hands, which we're back to doing. And so the students would each come up as your name is called. And I'm just going to tell you while they're getting set up, if you didn't get a chance to see this team play over the winter, I'm sorry for you because they played with a lot of heart and a lot of skill. It was a lot of fun to watch them. So go ahead.
Thank you. So we're really excited to share our congratulations to the Radnor High School Girls Basketball Team for winning the District One 5A Championship against Gwinnett Mercy Academy on February 25th, 2025, at West Chester University. They defeated GM in a dominant display, where they took control early and put on a strong defense. Junior Anna Rager went eight-for-eight from the line and finished with 10 points, and Junior Naya Yas, Radnor's leading scorer, put up 12 points, and the final score was 48 to 33. The team went on to the state tournament failing, falling in the second round to Central League rivals Strathhaven. Boo. They ended the season nine and eight. This was the first District One championship for the Radnor Girls Basketball Team since 2014. Congratulations.
If the girls could come up when they call their names. I have heard that three of the girls are at the lacrosse game, so they're not here. Congratulations to them. Riley Dontremont is one of them. Sophia Angelakos, is she here? Sadie Bolden, Ally Krug, Anna Rager, Naya Yao, Mia... Mia Yorvin. Ariel Memes. Caroline Quinn. Ella Scabla. Bree Simpson. Maren Halpin. Julia Richardson. Kayla Stevens. And Joey Wallace. And the coaches? Come on up, coaches?
No, no, there's a, on the next page, the team is led.
Okay. The team is led by head coach Rob Baxter and assistant coaches Maureen Ward, Nicole Ward, Julianne McLean, and Joe Hamel. The superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community, congratulates these students, their parents, and coaches on their outstanding accomplishment.
Okay, next recognition. I think Ms. Stern is going to help us with. And again, we're going to do certificates outside. Yeah, I think Ms. Brennan has them.
So as Martina said, we celebrate our student athletes and all their accomplishments. Sometimes we have some music things to celebrate, which is always a favorite of mine. Mira, would you like to come up? Oh, there you are. So congratulations to Radnor Junior, Mira Kaplan, selected for the Treble Choir at the 2025 NAFME Eastern Division Conference. Congratulations to Radnor Junior for being selected as only one of five Alto I vocalists from the state of Pennsylvania to participate in the National Association for Music Education's National All Eastern Honors Treble Choir. Mira has been an active and accomplished member of Radnor Township's music program since elementary school. She performed her first solo choir in fifth grade under the direction of Mrs. Beth Hacker at Eithan Elementary. At Radnor Middle School, she performed a featured solo in A Million Dreams and was awarded the Director's Award for Chorus by Mr. David Reef and Mrs. Heather Spindel. At Radnor High School, Mira has continued to demonstrate exceptional music and musical skills and leadership. She is a member of the treble a cappella group Madrigals and co-leads the mixed a cappella group Pro Musica. She performs as a vocalist in the competitive honors jazz ensemble led by Mrs. Nora McDonald and serves as a soloist and alto section leader in Meister Singers under the direction of Mrs. Spindel. Mira has participated in PMEA honors choir since her sophomore year. She has consistently earned top placements at the district, regional, and all-state levels. The NAFME National All Eastern Honors Treble Choir festivals consist of rigorous rehearsals under the direction of Dr. Jessica Napoliis, professor of choral music education at the University of North Texas. The event culminates in a concert on April 27th, so next week. The superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community, congratulates Mira, her parents, and her teachers on her outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you, Ms. Stern, and congratulations again, Mira. Very impressive. Next item on the agenda, I suspect a number of you are here for, is public comment. I'm going to just start by saying, if you intend to give public comment this evening, there is a sign-in sheet by the door, and we would like people to sign in there. Because a number of you may not have been here before, I'm going to be more formal and read the public comment requirements. So as per Board Policy 006, the board provides an opportunity at each regular board meeting for eligible participants to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. During the first public comment period, public comment can be made either in person or by telephone recording. I understand we do have some telephone recordings this evening. And for details on how to make a public comment by recording in the future, you see our website. When you come to the podium to make your comment, please state your full name and the town in which you live. You may make one comment per period, and you will have no more than four minutes to give your comment. We found it's been helpful for our solicitor to give people a warning when you have one minute left, so please don't be disturbed by that. That's actually to help you make sure you get your comment condensed into your four-minute period. And I think that's everything people need to know for this evening. Welcome. Who's here first? Hi. Again, just your name and town.
Hello again. My name is Leah Press, and I'm from Villanova. Dear board members and Radnor community, while I've spoken on this subject before, I felt the need to offer perspective once again. Many of us have expressed value in not banning books per our First Amendment rights, that the voice of the minority should not have lasting effects for all Radnor families for years to come, that the banned books were approved by district experts and such have educational value, and that once books begin to be banned, what other books are next? Which subset of our community is the next to be targeted? While doing a bit of digging as to where the thought process began for challenging these books, I learned that there is a broader effort by people outside of our own district to subvert Radnor's values of inclusion and diversity using religion and false info to strong-arm school districts in an attempt to alienate and harm marginalized students. Religious indoctrination has no place in our public schools, but it can be an important tool for understanding people's thoughts and motivation at times. Statements that were made at last week's meeting and those in the original challenge do not exhibit the intent to love, care, and protect our students, but rather to use false information, inflammatory statements, threats to those that disagree with them, and fierce denial that it's okay to be yourself, especially if you are considered an outlier. In using religion as a tool, I offer this. In the New Testament, 1 John 4:7-8 teaches, "Let us love one another, for love comes from God. Whoever does not love God, or whoever does not love, does not know God, because God is love." At the heart of our communities, it is the belief that every child is worthy of love and belonging. Books that include LGBTQ+ characters are not about promoting an agenda. They are about affirming the human dignity of all students. They are about love, which according to the Christian Bible, is the greatest of all virtues. In the Torah, Deuteronomy 16:20 states, "Justice, justice, ye shall pursue, that ye may live and inherit the land which the Lord your God is giving you." This call for justice, repeated twice for emphasis, demands action and not silence. It calls for fairness, not just in the outcomes of life, but in the process of living from day to day. When schools remove books that affirm LGBTQ+ identities, they send a message to those students that their stories and experiences are unworthy of being known or respected. True justice in education means ensuring every student has access to books. Sorry. True justice in education means ensuring every student has access to books that reflect both their lives and the lives of others, fostering empathy, connection, and understanding across differences. My family's not queer, but I identify with being different. My family is different. Here, we're not, but we've lived in communities where we are outliers. This hits home to me. The presence of diverse books, those with just words and those with words and pictures, is not a threat to student development.
One minute remaining.
On the contrary, it reflects our shared responsibility to uphold justice, dignity, and compassion for all students. We value deeply rooted, values that are deeply rooted in both religious and ethical traditions. As school board members, your decisions shape not just curriculum but culture. Upholding the availability of these books, including those with LGBTQ+ themes, is not only consistent with best educational practices, but also reflects a commitment to basic principles of love, justice, and inclusion. Let us ensure that our high school is a place where all students feel safe, valued, and inspired. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Press. Mr. Rosen, I recognize you. Come on up.
Hello. Hello, you all. Carl Rosen, I live in Overhill Road in Wayne, and I also teach at Radnor High School for these past 26 years. Last week at the Curriculum Committee, a parent opposed to what he deemed inappropriate books quoted a statutory definition. That statute, however, contains a key element that he neglected to mention. It has a section F titled "exceptions", the first exception context in which is educational. He also quoted a federal statute, but cherry-picked around the part of the definition that insists that invalid material must lack serious literary or artistic merit. If you initially think that a reference to a statute indicates a cut-and-dried conviction of a book that contains sexual content, I ask you, please, not to quit thinking after you hear one side story. Why would such statutes even need to identify exceptions or qualifications? Because content, intent, and art matter. When I teach my philosophy course at Radnor High School, we talk about how to address an argument which I simplify to consider the premises and consider the logic. Many community members have eloquently pointed out issues with the premises, including the obvious fact that the sexual partners in the challenge scene from Fun Home are consenting 19-year-olds, not minors. And I add that decontextualization, cherry-picking, and straw man... And I add that decontextualization, cherry-picking, and straw man fallacies raise valid concerns about the logic of applying the aforementioned statutes to the three banned literary memoirs. For several reasons, some based on premise, and some on logic, and some on both, these books, to the extent that I know them, all seem to me to pass the test for being reasonable material in a high school library. I am the teacher who at the March Curriculum Committee meeting referred to the importance of considering complexity. Although the speaker who referenced me last week at curriculum failed to represent what I said, which I hope was accidental and not an intentional distortion, he claimed that when I argued that showing images of minors engaged in sexual acts was an issue of complexity, when what I actually said was that the issue of banning controversial material, especially but not exclusively sexual material, is not an issue of pornography but an issue of complexity. There is such a thing as pornography, and pornography does not belong in a school library, but these books are not pornographic. If someone disagrees with me, I welcome that conversation, but I do request that I not be misquoted. It is an act of demagoguery to twist the words of one's counterpart into debate. We can have a fair and reasonable conversation if it is about the facts. That said, I do insist that complexity is a key element in helping our students develop as readers and thinkers, and at this point, I specifically want to refer to Fun Home. This book has been a valuable, intellectually challenging text that a few of my students have chosen as an option in class. The educational potential of that book in analyzing the buildings of Raman, the coming-of-age novel, is clear to me in the thoughtful work those high school juniors have done with it. Experience makes it clear to me that the book has provided insight into the human condition. It may not be your personal story or mine, but it is deeply human, and yes, it offers complexity that provides fuel to our thinking engines. My favorite story to have come out of the sad recent death of Pope Francis quotes his defense of literature, that quote, "We must never forget how dangerous it is to stop listening to the voice of other people when they challenge us." Thank you to the school board for encouraging a thoughtful series of conversations on this topic, and to our superb librarians whose professional judgment continues to impress me.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Hi.
Hi. Hi, my name is Laura Haynes. I live in Wayne, and I'm a school district parent to three sons, two at Wayne, and one at the middle school. I appreciate the opportunity to give public comment today about the recent book banning at the high school and the need for reinstating these books, Fun Home, Gender Queer, and Blankets Now. As you may recall, I've given two other public comments this spring about the issue, previously focusing on the policy and how we could, needs to be revised, as well as lack of adherence to our mission statement for the Township School District. At the last board meeting, a wise commenter mentioned that the policy revision was necessary and can take some time, as we all know how policies work, but there was a more real-time solution that could be done, so that's why I'm here today. Third time's a charm. And what I want to spend my time talking about tonight are the books themselves, kids and students and the, and the teachers, and how Fun Home, Blankets, and Gender Queer would be more impactful if the board were to approve this request tonight. First of all, I've read all three of the books and they're excellent works of art and literature, beautiful masters of memoirs for self-discovery and internal strength of character. Any person that considers these works of art inappropriate for high school students should probably consider other forms of literature that are read with the same microscope for inappropriateness, such as Catchers in the Rye, Animal Farm, Hitler, Holocaust, slavery, civil rights, I could go on. And I would say that these books that were, that were banned provide no significant issues from my perspective as, as ways to cause any sort of harm to anyone. These are works of literature that help kids learn, and since we're on the subject of kids, let me move to my next point, the students. Not move the podium. High school students and middle school students, for that matter, are rapidly changing biologically and emotionally, and we as parents and community members need to support them in their self-discovery of who they are and what they want to be. Fun Home, Blankets, and Gender Queer are excellent examples of resources for students to have access to for reading and knowledge discovery. These books should be there in the library now, and who better to help those students, children, adolescents, learn and discover the fantastic world of literature? The librarians. Librarians and teachers are the lifeblood of this school district. They desperately need these books returned to the library for reference and a tool for learning. When these books were removed, you eliminated a helpful and thero, therapeutic, therapeutic tool, I work with medicine, so work with me there, for their educational toolkit. I'm way better with sports, so work with me on this. Think about the librarians as your quarterbacks in the literature team of life, with the students only being as proficient to go through their high school careers as players in their game of life. With the right quarterbacks, you have the right plays, the right resources to educate and train those players on the inclusive nature.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. To love one everyone, regardless of their differences and abilities. The teachers and staff need Fun Home, Blankets, and Gender Queer back. More resources for self-discovery should never be considered a crime for curiosity and learning. I say to you, board members, do the right thing for our school district's students and teachers by approving the request to have the three books put back onto the shelves, lead with love and learning, be inclusive and transparent, and make sure we're adherent to our mission statement for the Township School District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. We had a race to the podium. No, we're good, you're fine, she'll come up next. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Corinne Lamet, I'm from Bryn Mawr, and I speak on behalf of a group of Radnor alums, known as the Finkelites. I'll credit to Abby Longman for writing the statement on our behalf. Members of the board and Radnor community, we the undersigned are all beneficiaries of a superior Radnor education, mostly during the years of big shoulder pads and bigger hair in the eighties. As Radnor students, we were challenged to do more, learn more, and expose our minds to more. Our teachers didn't avoid adult topics, and we were expected to identify sexual imagery in the poetry of Shakespeare and Donne, and understand the horrors of the Vietnam War. In high school, I met many of the signers of this letter. Most of us met in the lobby area of Ms. Fran Finkel's office in the library. As we became closer friends, we took on the name The Finkelites in homage to our ever encouraging and infinitely patient host. It's really no wonder that we all met in the library. Libraries are places where we could be ourselves, seek out information, challenge each other, and find a deep fountain of creativity. I think it's fair to say that most, if not all, of the Finkelites, and other students too, of course, struggled in some way during high school, which is one of the reasons we are so concerned about the three graphic novels that were recently banned by the school board. Gender Queer by Maya Kobabe, Fun Home, a family tragicomic by Alison Bechtel, and Blankets by Craig Thompson. In each of these books, a young protagonist struggles in a way relatable to most teens. In Gender Queer, the main character doesn't fit in with societal expectations and strives for years to find and accept who he is. In Fun Home, a girl confronts her sexuality in a family where her dad hides his own sexuality. In Blankets, an awkward teen falls in love for the first time and discovers the highs and lows that can come with first love. The overarching themes of these books are all enhanced by the fact that they are graphic novels, and the artwork emphasizes the emotions of the characters. Because it is a visual medium, there are portrayals of naked bodies in each of these books, but to call them pornographic is inaccurate and unfair. All three of these coming-of-age stories reflect situations that are currently being lived by Radnor students and their families. Even those few students who cannot directly relate to the dilemmas faced by the characters in these books will benefit from learning about the experiences of others. The effects of bullying, low self-esteem, family misunderstanding, and misinformation have all added to an increase in the likelihood of behavioral health issues, including depression, self-harm, and ultimately suicidal ideation and actions. The argument that these books could cause childhood trauma, willingness to be sexually exploited, enabling sexual grooming, and acceptance of pedophilia as alleged by, hmm? Thank you, by the original parent complainant is not true. In fact, teens who read these books and understand that they are not alone and are experiencing normal feelings and emotions would be less likely to fall prey to these feared harms. We believe that today's students deserve the right to access library materials that require maturity, critical thinking, and an open mind. The school district has done a great disservice to all students by removing these three books from the library catalog, and we hope that you will rectify that error immediately. I close with quoting Dr. Matt Finch, American Library Association. Libraries are innately subversive institutions born of the radical notion that every single member of society deserves free, high-quality access to knowledge and culture. Thank you very much.
Thank you to you and the Finkelites. Welcome.
It's my turn now. I'm Catherine Barrett-Risk. I live in Radnor, Pennsylvania, obviously Pennsylvania. I'm a third-generation Radnor grad, so excuse me if I get a little emotional. I just, it took me like four years to convince my wife to move to Radnor. I grew up here, and I became myself, I was welcomed in the community. It took, it took me a really long time to come to terms with my identity, but that no, that was no shortage to the education I received at Radnor and the support of friends, teachers, staff, all around. So, okay, look, I'm collecting myself, here we go. So it took me years to convince my wife to move to Radnor, and when we were finally stepping into an area of life where we wanted to lay down roots and create a family, I convinced her time and time again that this was a welcoming place, and it was full of love and wonderful people. So you can understand my embarrassment when, just a few months in, I'm standing in front of a school board talking about banned books, but throughout history, and I don't have anything written, and it's really not that eloquent, but throughout history, the good guys are never the ones who want to ban books. So I'm just going to read from the afterword of Gender Queer, which was a book that I have never read, and I'm so glad that I did, because as a 36-year-old gay woman, I learned a lot of things about my community that I didn't know that I, I'm happy I did. But anyway, this is what the writer Maya is writing after I decided to publish this book and just a few months before it's coming out. So, "A few months before this book was published, I started seeing a therapist. The primary reason was to work through some of my fears and anxieties, but in the back of my mind, I also thought, it might be a good idea to have an established relationship with a therapist before my book comes out, in case I get a wave of online hate. I had no idea what the reception of this book would be, but I knew that the queer and trans content often receives pushback. Every year, the American Library Association tracks instances of books being banned or restricted in schools and libraries, and every year, a large portion of censored books are written by queer authors or contain queer characters. So I braced myself with an uncertainty of knowing what was to come. What I received instead of a wave of hate was a wave of online love. There were so many pre-orders that the first printing of the book was sold out before the release date, and by the week of release, we had already ordered a second printing. I began getting messages from multiple readers multiple times a week saying how much the book meant to them. People told me that the book helped them understand themselves, that they had shared it with a parent, or a sibling, or a friend, or a partner, or a child, and it had opened up a conversation about gender identity that they hadn't had before. Several people told me that they'd recommended the book to their therapist. A few times, I often heard that families, after reading the book, started using their children's pronouns correctly. People told me that the book made them feel less alone, which in turn made me feel less alone." So after all that, and my sad sob story, I just want to say that I don't think that Radnor wants to be on the wrong side of history. I think we want to be a community that supports not only its children, but builds allyship. And I really think that if we don't reinstate this book, it's a slippery slope, and we became, we become a town that we have never been, and we do not want to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrett-Risk. Welcome this evening, sir.
Good evening, I'm Phil Buckley from Bryn Mawr. Ms. Stern, how are you? Used to be Fred's of Brian for a while.
It's, it's a small community.
Surely is, yeah. You're deciding whether to permanently ban three memoirs, books that tell real stories about identity and growing up, Gender Queer, Fun Home, and Blankets aren't pornography. They're powerful coming-of-age stories and acclaimed, from acclaimed authors. When I went to Radnor High School, I was one of only a handful of out and proud students. The fact that these books exist in our library and had been read should highlight progress in this school's district that has made. I was a student here when Kite Runner was on our reading list, for summer reading list for our freshman year, so it was post, I believe that was the last book that was challenged, correct? And to see the whole process of kind of what happened behind closed doors, it kind of just seems like we're kind of slowly rolling back in a, you know, a way that I've never seen my 33 years living in this area. So I guess just to be quick about it, because I don't want to be up here too long, is just listen to your librarians, trust your students, bring these books back to where they belong. I have a lot of gay and trans friends that are both, in my, that are in my life, that are both blood and not, that I call my family, and they're dealing with enough right now as it is, so let these kids have their books, let them find an escape from their current world, and let me be clear, Nazis ban books, hate and bigotry has no home here, and Nazis certainly don't either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Welcome.
How we doing?
Good.
My name's Carson Bose, I'm, I'm in St. David's, Wayne, depending on the, the mailing address that the computer decides. I'm a graduate of Radnor High School, and I don't like making these kind of speeches, so I'll be quick. But I value the education I received at Radnor Middle and High School, and I want those, I want that for those who follow. Nationwide, there's been a sense of pulling the ladder up behind you in a general sense. As I went to college, I recognized the value of a Radnor education. I was better prepared than a lot of my collegiate peers. I could, I was better at reading comprehension and, and writing preparation. By providing the widest scope of information, opinions, and perspectives, Radnor provides students the best opportunity for success in the future. And isn't that what the whole point of education is about? Mr. Rosen was one of my English teachers. I work in education now, and that is not without the impact that many of my teachers at Radnor, who exposed me to those ideas and the value of perspective, provided me. It is not the role of a single parent or a small group to determine what is appropriate material for a district or a township. This is not about three books. This is about the precedent that Radnor could be setting here. There are students in every classroom grappling with these issues, in my district too. To reject these concepts is to reject these students, and that is not the purpose of a school board, a district, a high school, a middle school, and elementary school. Give these people the respect that they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Bose. Another welcome face. Ms. Perkins.
My comment's so boring, it's a little embarrassing. I'm Hadley Perkins, Wayne, PA, but I want to talk about procedure, so not as heartfelt or interesting as what everybody else has shared. But I want to comment to suggest that it's more procedurally defensible to vote on the book now, vote whether to put the books back on the shelf now than to wait down the road if the policy is revised or revoked. I sympathize with wanting to wait until the policy is revised to decide whether to re-shelf Blankets, Gender Queer, and Fun Home. I'm also a nerdy policy procedure person, but I think while it makes intuitive sense to do that, to wait until there's a new policy, makes intuitive sense to have a clear-cut, it makes, I'm sorry, it's more defensible to have a clear-cut exercise of power than to vote-based, wow, my notes are really bad. So, these books were removed pursuant to the challenge made in January of 2025 under Board Policy 144.1, as we've been talking about this a lot, I think there's agreement that, that that should be revised. But it's therefore appropriate that the decision to put them back on the shelf should be made in accordance with the policies that were in place when the challenge was entered in January 2025. Applying a policy to, applying a policy to determine whether to put these books back on the shelf that didn't exist when the challenge was made would be deeply unfair to the parent who, within his rights, entered this challenge, submitted the challenge to the school district pursuant to Policy 144.1. Because Policy 144.1 doesn't include a mechanism for returning the books to the library, which has been discussed at Policy and elsewhere, the correct process to return any book, not even these, these three specifically, but any book that had been removed pursuant to 144.1, is through the process that the district solicitor described at through the process that the district solicitor described at the policy meeting, simply voting for the books to return immediately. There is no other policy that's appropriate for the books that were removed pursuant to 144.1. A decision to revise the policy first and then consider whether to return the books based on a policy that doesn't exist and didn't exist when the challenge was entered, was filed, is unfair to the complainant and it's not procedurally appropriate. Second, the process to review, revise, and possibly rescind Policy 144.1, in my opinion, should be independent and objective. It's really hard to see how the process will be viewed as independent and objective if the board's decision about whether or not to return this book, these books to the shelf, is even partly dependent on the policy review and how it's revised. Rather, the revision process should be done with a clean slate, free from any lingering or potential arguments that the new policy was written, to create a means to put these specific books back on the shelf. It's therefore, in my opinion, not only in the best interest of our students, and for all the reasons that we've heard tonight, to put the books back on the shelf this evening, it's also in the best interest of the board, and it'll help preserve the integrity of the new board policy related to the book challenges, when and if it is revised and/or revoked. So, as always, I thank you all for your time and energy and for listening to my boring comments. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Staffeld.
It's not good when you guys remember our names, I feel. My name is Meg Staffeld. I'm from Wayne. It does feel like we're all in a really awkward book club meeting, you know? But I'm going to start with the assumption that, like me, you have all read the books and are surprised by the lengths the complaints had to stretch the truth to make the images more objectionable than they really are in context. So, I want to make sure that everybody here understands that even once the materials policy is revised, there will be no automatic mechanism to put the books back. That's not how challenge policies have historically worked, and that's probably not how ours would work either. No matter what, the board is going to have to vote to overturn the decision of the ad hoc committee if they're going to go back, whether it's now or in three months. Our challenge policy had one librarian defending her job to accusations of grooming to three of her superiors, a colleague in a different department, and a parent. It was a really, really uphill climb from the get-go. No one is going to fault the board for siding with her now. Our community has learned so much over the past few months, and when we know better, we do better. We have massive bipartisan community support for returning the books now. You have a letter signed by over 150 community members and parents requesting that you return them now, as well as the one from the Finkelites. But more importantly, at least a dozen students have stood here in rooms like this one and said that they feel othered, discarded, or rejected as a result of this decision. Waiting to vote makes these students have to come to more meetings and ask you again and again and again to see them and to recognize their discomfort. You have the power today to stop it, to stop making them beg you to let them belong here. There are people who choose to do this as a hobby. They keep poster-sized images of these books and a list of grievances in their basement, and they come up to go from board meeting to board meeting and police station to police station, but that's not their hobby. They didn't ask to be advocates. They didn't sign up for this. Please don't make them come back here and ask you again. Thank you.
Another repeat.
Hi, my name is Anna Marie Jones, Wayne, Pennsylvania. I want to, first of all, thank you. I did write a letter because I wasn't able to attend the last meetings, and I want to thank you so much for answering me back and Liz and Sarah, and letting me know that you are looking into amending the policy so that we have a more fair and accurate, transparent way to review books. I am here because I fundamentally believe that the books that were removed do represent many of our children, and that representation needs to be there in the libraries. It really, truly does. I did take time to read one of the books, Fun Home, and I agree, it's not pornographic. There are images that, if the illustrations weren't there, the imagination is there to replace it, and that is needed for some kids. Kids need to have that representation, and I agree with whoever said, if you take that representation away, then you're telling a child that there's something wrong with them. So fundamentally, I am here, I'm here because I fundamentally believe that these books are important. And I believe that, so I actually have a question. I know you can't answer me now, but how closely do you look at intent when someone is challenging a book? And the reason why I'm asking that is because if a person fundamentally believes that a book is so damaging and so bad, then why is that person asking their child to check out that book and physically carry it home? So, I wonder about intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Rolchin. I live in Wayne, Pennsylvania, and my notes are very note-like and not script-like, so sorry. But I kind of learned a lot about this, and I've spent a lot of time like researching, and I read all three of the books, and I'm writing an article, but that's besides the point. I know a lot about it, and I don't know if you guys know, but there's a musical for Fun Home, which is a really good musical. But a lot of my friends don't know as much about it, and they're not here, but when I've talked to them, the general consensus has been that they don't want books randomly removed from the library, and like most high school students, they're not going to spend their Tuesday night trying to figure out what to say at a board meeting or how to read a book that they don't want to read. But they still believe that books shouldn't be removed from our libraries, and they also, I think, really trust our librarians. And one of the biggest things that I learned about while I was researching was the amazing job that our librarians do selecting books. And I didn't really know how they selected books or what the process was for that, but there is a process, and they select books for the students, for our best interests. And I personally have checked out a book from the library, though I know that I've mentioned a couple of weeks ago that a lot of people haven't. And I really appreciate our librarians for doing that, and I know that they're some of the students' favorite people at this school, and that we trust them and we want you guys to also trust them to make decisions concerning the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rolchin. Welcome, sir.
I'm Craig Press. I live in Radnor. I'm also a pediatric neurologist in the area, and I'll talk about a couple of different things. Books really can't hurt anyone. What can hurt people is people, and that's what's happening in our community. No one's ever caught gay from a book. But, just like that, you also apparently can't catch kindness and love from reading the Bible or a religious text. That's not what they do. What you can do is scare people into becoming afraid and hurting themselves. And I take care of kids all the time that have shot themselves, shot other people, because they don't feel like they're included in a community and they're afraid, and that's what happens. That's dangerous. These books, not dangerous. And so, families and kids don't feel like they're supported in the community because they're afraid that their identity, or that people are afraid enough of their identity that the idea of their identity in a book means it has to get removed from the school and that the school is itself supporting that, that creates danger. That will make students afraid, and that will make students dangerous, and that's what we don't want. We need students to feel supported, because it doesn't actually matter what the content of this book was. Banning books is bad. We should put the books back and allow our students to read and learn concepts. The concepts and the ideas in the book are not the dangerous thing. Not being able to argue and reason through and make a decision is the dangerous thing. Having a book in school about communism isn't what made people communists, but not knowing how to rationalize and argue about that is the danger. So, the lack of exposure to the ideas is really the problem. We should include books in school that allow people to see different ideas, learn about different cultures and identities so that they can feel included. And that way, we don't have kids feeling like they don't belong and become dangerous to their communities, to themselves, and that they can make arguments that will allow, make arguments to feel included and advocate on their behalf, whatever the concept or idea is. So, please put the books back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Press. Anyone else? Mr. Moore, former school director Moore. Welcome.
Hi, Bradley Moore Rosemont. It was great to hear Fran Finkel's name mentioned. She was a great teacher. I met her in high school, obviously, and she taught me to read, and I don't mean, you know, understand words on the page. She taught me to really read, and I'm so grateful to her for that. I'm here to speak about item 8.3. Thank you for putting 8.3 on the agenda tonight. A lot of people have been asking for you to have deliberation and a discussion and potentially a vote about whether to return these books to the library while you are also considering revisions to the policy that led to their removal. I'd also like to mention a couple of board members who've already said some thoughts, articulated some thoughts about, you know, what is the right time for this? At the March meeting, I raised some public comment, and Mrs. Stern made some comment about, you know, her thoughts on what the right time to do this. And in the recent curriculum committee meeting, Mrs. Duffy made some comments about timing, and I appreciate that thoughtfulness. But the most important thing tonight, whether you vote or not, is to have a robust debate. Everyone here wants to know how you feel about these books, what your judgment is and your beliefs, using that judgment about what should happen to them, whether it's happening tonight or in the future after the policy is revised. So, my first request is that we hear from everyone on the board. How do you feel? Where are you? Where do you stand on these books? I'd also like to talk a little bit about board governance and proper procedure. I really want to thank Mrs. Duffy also for raising that principle when she was talking about timing. You know, when is the right time to consider putting these books back into the library? However you vote on that, what is the right time to consider that issue? That is the highest principle, right? Board governance and following proper procedure, whatever the outcome is, as long as you are keeping that principle close to you, you can believe you are doing the right thing. We have an agenda item that was properly noticed. It was raised in the curriculum committee and discussed in curriculum committee. It would be possible to make a, you know, motion to postpone, a motion to table, and not have a vote on that item tonight. But what would feel more like sticking to your principles of good governance? When you've noticed this action item, when you're going to have a deliberation about it tonight to push it down the road, to possibly be discussed after you revise a policy, we're not even sure exactly what that revision will look like, or to meet the moment and make a decision about that tonight? You know, what would feel truer to you in respecting principles of board governance? And what do you think the public would recognize as a better representation of principles of board governance? I'd like you to think about that. My answer is I think that you should have a discussion tonight and also have a vote tonight. But I will not judge anyone here negatively if that's not your view and you prefer to wait until after the policy is revised. But how that policy is revised, I mean, there's a couple of ways it could go. You know, potentially, there will be a mechanism for board review after a book is challenged and there could be some kind of safeguard. Potentially, there won't even be a process for removing books. But if you don't deal with these books tonight, you're going to be dealing with them eventually. We're all here now. Whatever the outcome of that policy debate, we might as well discuss it tonight and hopefully vote on it tonight. I'd be remiss also if I didn't briefly mention action item 8.1 on the agenda. Mr. Pauling, budget looks great. 10 out of 10, no notes. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Luce, welcome.
Hello, my name is Sheri Luce. I live in Wayne, and I wanted to address you tonight to say, when I first came before the board on the 25th of February, I was the only one at the meeting, and I came specifically because members of Red, Wine, and Blue, which I am the leader of in Pennsylvania, were reaching out to me and saying there were rumors that Radnor was banning books. So, I came and I read a statement all alone, and you now see what this community has done. The people who are here and standing up, the students who have come before you, the people who have shared their very emotional, personal stories, this is real and this is our community. Now, stories have come back to me also that some members of our administration and board are saying, "I'm part of an extremist organization who stirred this up." I want to be clear, there was never a call to action to the Red, Wine, and Blue membership. I intentionally came alone and kept this quiet to see what would happen, and your community has stood up and made it very clear where we stand on this. Red, Wine, and Blue is not an extremist organization. If so, I'm out there every day fighting to keep vouchers at bay. Vouchers are going to destroy public education in Pennsylvania. Radnor will be hit really hard. I'll continue to fight, whether you call me an extremist or not. I'm going to keep fighting to protect our teachers, to make sure they can teach real history. Our science teachers can teach real science. Our, you know, English teacher can teach real literature, and I'm going to protect our librarians and the integrity that they bring to this school. If that's extremist, call me extremist, but I'm not going to stop fighting for these things. Tonight, you have the opportunity to right a wrong. The policy was bad. We all knew it was bad, but we didn't pay attention, even when they tried to have our superintendent arrested, because we just all thought, oh, the policy must be okay, and that's why nothing happened. Shame on me for not digging in and looking at that policy back then, but we've looked at it now. The policy is bad. You have the opportunity tonight to put those books back where the students need them. We met, you told me they're not pornography. They asked you to remove them because they're pornography. They're not. Put the books back tonight. Show the students you care. Then fix this policy. Fix it so we don't have to see us in the Philadelphia Inquirer again, so that we don't have to have meeting after meeting with our community saying, "This does not happen in Radnor." Fix it tonight, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luce. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Erin Starzak from Wayne, Pennsylvania. I have a 10th grader and a 6th grader. So, I'm here like everyone else, urging you, asking you, begging you, embarrassingly so, to reconsider the removal of Gender Queer, Fun Home, and Blankets from our school library. This decision, as you all know, is based on antiquated and deeply flawed policy, one that lacked clarity, transparency, and fairness. It enables decisions to be driven by individual political and social ideology that, rather than collective educational values, we should uphold as a district. In this case, the ideologies clearly target the LGBTQ+ community and under the misleading guise of pornography. Let's be clear, as everyone has said tonight, this isn't pornography. These books aren't pornographic. They're award-winning books, critically acclaimed works of art. They explore identity, trauma, belonging, and healing, deeply human experiences that all of our students are going through. Sorry. What's troubling is this is in contradiction of our mission at Radnor Schools. And I quote what our mission is. "It is to inspire in all students the love of learning and creating, and to empower them to discover and pursue their individual passions with knowledge, confidence, and caring to shape the future." The mission of Radnor Schools is under three principles: belonging, wellness, and achievement. How does banning books, particularly those that reflect the experiences of the LGBTQ students, support a sense of belonging? How does erasing the representation contribute to wellness or encourage achievement? This ban continued to send the message that some students' stories aren't worthwhile. Some students' stories are inappropriate, and it's indirectly inconsistent with our district's stated purpose. And let's be honest what this really is about. The issue is not the content. The issue is discomfort with LGBTQ+ identities, being represented in an honest and unfiltered way. This censorship is disguised as concern, and history has shown how dangerous that is. I'm going to repeat the question that someone else asked before. What side of history do you want to be on? What slippery slope precedent is this setting within this? Or do we want to be a district that continues to empower our students and have alumni come back here, as they did today, to represent and to show us how great these students can be? Our students deserve access to diverse stories, especially the ones that challenge us, make us reflect, and help us grow. If we truly stand for belonging, wellness, and achievement, then we must stand against censorship. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Starzak. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Natasha Thomas, and I live in Wayne. I have children in all three levels of our school district: the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. So I care deeply about what's happening in our schools at every stage. Thank you to the Radnor School Board for your time and dedication, and to the many parents on both sides who have spoken with thoughtfulness and concern. We're all here because we want to protect and support our children. I'm speaking tonight against banning books from our high school library and asking for your vote to put the books back on the shelves tonight. All of the comments tonight, I feel I need to say ditto. I don't know if I can add much more than just adding one more voice of reason for fairness and protecting the most vulnerable in our community. I understand the desire to shield kids from content that may feel uncomfortable or unfamiliar, especially when it comes to books portraying alternative families or relationships. But removing these books doesn't protect kids. It limits their ability to think critically and empathize with others. As someone who values conservative principles, such as personal responsibility, freedom, and not to mention limited government, I believe that censorship has no place in our public school. Parents have every right to guide their own children's reading, but not to decide for all families. We already have trusted experts making these decisions. Our high school librarians, who are vetted by this board and the administration, hold advanced degrees in education and child development. They're the ones best equipped to choose what's age-appropriate, not a small group of individuals based on personal beliefs. Books don't harm kids. Ignorance does. Denying students' access to diverse perspectives doesn't build strength. It fosters fear and shame. Based on the amazing presentations by the students earlier, it's clear that our district is doing an amazing job. Let's continue to raise students who are resilient, informed, and grounded in their values, not sheltered from the world they're about to inherit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Welcome, come on up.
Good evening to the board. My name is Emily Nelson, and I'm a resident of Wayne. And I'm here to ask for two things. One is the return of Blankets, Gender Queer, and Fun Home to the shelves in the library. Two, to scrap the policy that results in some uncomfortable complainant imposing their parenting decisions on everyone else in this district. I find it hard to believe that complaints that resulted in removing the books were made in good faith. These people purportedly want to protect children from graphic imagery, yet they exploit every opportunity to publish those images in exaggerated, out-of-context, enormous form to as wide of an audience as possible through televised meetings, public demonstrations, and practically begging reporters like Savvy Mainline to publish them on Al Gore's internet. These are all public venues where, unlike in the Radnor High School Library, there's no one there to curate the material. There's no controlling who sees it. It could be infants, preschoolers, elementary school kids, anyone. People are exposed to them involuntarily and against their will. Unlike in the library, where you have to seek and check out a book, it's hard to avoid these signs that someone is holding up in front of a camera or in your face. Whatever their motives, however, their argument is just plain wrong. It's not pornography. Pornography is gratuitously graphic content with no educational, historical, sociological, artistic, or other merit. And you've heard students, and former students, tonight and in previous committee and wider board meetings, tell you why these books have merit. These books reflect some students' reality and their discomfort, their questions and struggles with gender identity, sexuality, conformance, acceptance, rejection by peers, parental neglect, and even abuse. And if you read the books, and I hope you did, I did, you notice that they're all memoirs, they're records of lived experiences, and that all of the authors felt compelled to share their stories and their struggles with others to maybe prevent other kids from struggling, from feeling alone or suffering in silence. Far from encouraging or predisposing the kids to victimization by abusers, these books help identify unsafe people and unsafe situations and show that there's a path through adversity and tragedy. Other students who have testified before you, they've said that they don't see themselves in the book, and that's okay. They still didn't want them banished, either. Either the books don't, or the issues in the books don't affect them, or maybe those children like to have them on the shelves because it reminds them that, hey, there are all kinds of people in this school and in this world: gay, straight, male, female, between, and beyond the binary. Some opponents of the books may protest, well, Emily, what about my rights as a parent to control what my child is exposed to or can access? And I say, one, there's a mechanism already in place for you to prevent your child from taking out the books. Sadly, that's your choice. And number two, good luck. The quickest way to pique a kid's interest is to say, you can't do this. You can't read this. You're too naive, you're too vulnerable, unintelligent, or incapable. This spurs the spunky kids into action. It demoralizes everyone because it sends a message that they're unable to process it, puts everyone at a disadvantage because kids learn through exposure and experience. So again, I'm asking you to act tonight to reinstate the books because inaction is also a policy, especially since as the excellent presentations on social studies and English language development at the curriculum committee meeting last week stressed the goals of locally developed and diverse and relevant curricula that focus on encouraging students to investigate topics in depth and make meaning of their learning, leading to a sense of belonging to self, to school, and the wider community. I ask that you trust and respect the judgment and guidance of trained, caring librarians. I said that I was going to ask you for two things, and I'm actually asking for more, which is, one, return the books right now. Scrap the policy. It's flawed.
Time has expired.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Froelich, welcome.
Hi, my name is Ken Froelich. My family is very much involved in Radnor. My wife's a retired Radnor teacher. My children got an excellent education, and both are graduates of the Radnor High School and went on to get graduate degrees. We, my wife and I decided to come here because we really care about the community, and we were really appalled at the idea that we were banning books. I was going to say a number of different things, but the people who preceded me up here pretty much said most of the things I wanted to say. But there is one point that wasn't made. This is part of what's going on in our country. There are people being forced out of career positions in our government. They're being censored out because of their positions. There are law firms that are being blackmailed into taking positions. Harvard University just had to take a stand to stop government censorship. There are TV stations whose licenses are being threatened. This may seem like a small thing in that big, much bigger fight against censorship and against going against the freedom that we've always had. But I think it's a step that, it's a stand that we must take now. We must not back off of it or let it go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Froelich. Hi, welcome.
Jody Warren, I live in Wayne. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here tonight in support of returning the recently banned books to our library shelves. These books were chosen by educators and librarians for their educational value, and the removal has deprived students of access to diverse perspectives and important conversations. That said, I think it would be wise to consider changing the policy in full first to ensure that future challenges like this don't continue to create disruption and confusion. If we're truly committed to protecting intellectual freedom and supporting our educators, then we must not only restore these books, but put lasting and strong protections in place. If there is alignment on the board with respect to making the necessary policy changes, I respectfully request the board to proceed swiftly and transparently with the policy update process. With an understanding that this review process could be complete by the mid-June board meeting, not only will this demonstrate good governance, it will also eliminate the possibility of future challenges, which can further undermine the integrity of our school libraries as well as the greater Radnor community. I want the books back on the shelves tonight as much as most of us here do, but I'd want to do it with care and with intention. Let's get this right and make sure it lasts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. You're next. We'll take your comment now, and then you can sign it when you're done. Thank you.
I'm Jess Enoch. I have three children, two at the high school and one at the middle school. I live in Wayne. I just wanted to elaborate on the point this gentleman made. I'm a professor at the University of Maryland, and I have a joint appointment in women's studies and rhetoric and writing studies. And I do want to just say, if I was grading all of the arguments here, I'd be very... I think that we've made some really thoughtful arguments about what our main values are and how we make decisions. And we make decisions based on values, and we make decisions on the values that we believe we want to uphold. And so I think it's up to you to make some decisions about the values you want to say you make decisions upon, which is what we think rhetoric and argument is. As a women's studies professor, I just want to note that across the country, LGBTQ centers at universities are being shut down and being renamed to be communities of inclusion or shut down completely. My job, I might not be teaching women's studies classes next year. So this is up to you. We can say that we are going to take these books off the shelf, or we're going to say that we're not going to be part of this movement that is erasing LGBTQ identity in our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enoch. Is there anyone else in person? I know we have some recorded comments, but I don't want to miss anyone who's in the audience. Okay. Can we hear the recorded comments, please? Can I just ask how many we've got so we know?
We have four.
Okay. Thank you.
Those of you asking Wayne students, please reinstate these three banned graphic novels. It is said that these books are not age-appropriate. Return age-appropriate means suitable in terms of topics, messages, and teaching methods for the development and social maturity of the particular age or age group of children or adolescents based on developing cognitive, emotional, and behavioral capacity typical to that age range. In this definition, we see that the library has an obligation to provide access to books for older children that are near to, but not older than, the age range. The publishers of these three books clearly designated this group. Radnor's website contains a link to the ALA website where it says, "The American Library Association stringently and unequivocally maintains that libraries and librarians have an obligation to resist efforts to systematically exclude material dealing with any subject matter, including sex, gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. The school librarians work to provide a dynamic, well-rounded variety of literature to create the opportunity for children to develop a love for reading. This book banning is hindering that lifelong endeavor. If belonging, respect, and fairness are Radnor's vision, then excluding these books is taking action that is counter to this vision because it sends a message that certain people do not belong here in Radnor. Banning these three books means that we're trying to ban those who have different gender identity than the typical binary identities that the majority has. Where does this end? Was asked by a student representative on the board last week. Once you start banning books relating to one group of people, that opens the door to continued banning books relating to other groups. We cannot let this negative trend continue. Therefore, we need to put these books back on the library shelves. This action would be symbolic of banning in solidarity with those who are marginalized in our community. Actions speak louder than words. The way that you treat the smallest and most marginalized group of people in our community is the way that you ultimately treat everyone. How do you treat those who are different from you? This is how we demonstrate to children what it means in our country to have a First Amendment right to freedom of speech. Our children are watching us deal with this tricky situation. Are we advancing or eliminating our country's values with these actions? This is not an easy decision to make. Considering the political agenda against marginalized people as our federal executive branch bans certain groups of people that it dislikes, but I would rather do the right thing by standing up for the minority. Doing nothing allows this archaic agenda to continue, an agenda that gives less to those in need of help the most. To be the kind of community where people can belong, Radnor monitors and provides qualified teachers and continually improves resources for hundreds of families that speak 35 different languages in their homes, like Spanish or Urdu. This program was showcased last week, and I could see the pride that everyone had and how successful it was in making the community a place where everyone belongs. So I just ask that you extend this same action to these three books: Home Fun, Gender Queer, and Blankets, by putting them back on the shelves. Nobody's being forced to read these books. They're just being made available to people that want to read them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Rosen. I live at 601 Glen Mary Road, St. David, Pennsylvania, and I'm calling to support returning the three books that were removed from the library. I'm calling to support returning them to the library shelves at RHS. Thank you so much.
Good evening, this is Rachel Skolaklow. I live in Wayne, Pennsylvania. I'm calling today regarding the revision process for the Book Challenge Policy 144.1 and any related policies to book challenges. I would like to respond to a comment that Jamie Lau made at the last policy meeting. After meeting, Ms. Lau suggested removing any policy that allows book challenges. Having had nearly two weeks to consider her suggestion, I would like to voice my agreement for taking up her suggestion. I'd like the revision to result in there being no official channel to challenge books. We are living in a time when the profession of teaching is under siege, when teachers are devalued regardless of their multitude of training, their talents, their strengths, and their dedication to children in our schools. Teaching is one of the few professions where there's ongoing professional development. And in my experience as an education professor, I know that teachers embrace this pathogen. I have been to teacher conferences, librarian conferences, and one of the things that has profoundly impressed me time and again is how dedicated teachers are to serving their students. They do this by working with other teachers, whether in the district or across the country. And they do this with the goal of ensuring that all students are successful. So when we put in place policies such as 144.1 that allow one anonymous individual to submit a complaint that undermines their teacher's expertise and challenges their commitment to serving all students, then we are undermining our ability to have good teachers and excellent schools. I would like to applaud Jamie Lau for her innovative thinking and to remind people that our democracy works best when we participate in the way that a democracy is expected to work. We can run to be on the school board. We can vote for people to be on the school board. We can attend school board meetings and speak up. And we can stay engaged in our community to ensure that we're communicating clearly what we hope for our children and we hope for each other. So I would like to see the school board take up Jamie's suggestion and remove Policy 144.1. If, however, the school board decides to revise the policy rather than remove it, then I hold by the suggestions I made at the last policy meeting. Thank you very much to all school board members for taking this seriously, for doing the due diligence to make sure that the policy makes sense for our community and for your ongoing commitment to our students.
Hello, my name is Karen Burke. I reside
I reside in Villanova. I wanted to call. I'm unable to attend the board meeting for April 22nd, but I wanted to leave a comment for the meeting this evening. The reason for my call is to recommend or ask that the recent books that were removed from the Radnor High School library after a challenge by a parent and decision by a very small committee, I would recommend that the books be put back in the library. I think this entire process of the challenge and then subsequent meetings that have been had showing the flaws and issues with the challenge system to show that right now we're still working in a very flawed system. And until the board and whatever steps need to be taken to have a really sound process finalized, to ensure that books are challenged for the right reasons, removed for the right reasons, with the correct process, I would think it would make sense that books that were removed based on a very flawed at best process should still be available at this time. And my reason for that is because the process really doesn't work in the way it's intended. My thought is that we should be deferring to the experience and expertise of the librarians in the school. I really think they have the students' best interests at heart, they have the experience necessary to work in and run a library, they have the knowledge, the background, the training, and they're often the ones who are interacting with the student body on a day-to-day basis and have a sense of what the students need, what a cross-section of students needs. So I really just think their experience, their expertise, and their position makes them the most qualified to be making these decisions at this current time. And then when or if a new process is designed that is really more thorough and robust than the previous one, at that point, any book challenges and removal of books can be determined through that. But because that's lacking at this time, it just seems to make the most sense to have the books still available. My understanding is also that one of the books that had been removed is part of a teacher's curriculum, and that if the books aren't available in the library, the teacher can't teach that particular book. I think that's a real disservice to the teacher who designed the course, who's been using that book, and to the students who maybe were preparing to read that book. So obviously, teacher input is also important, and it seems like part of that was missing in this process. So again, just recommending that the books would be made available until a more thorough process has been developed by the board, and at that later time, if the book is determined the book should be removed, it can happen at that point. Thank you so much, and we really appreciate your time and energy that you're putting into all of this for the school.
That's the last one. Thank you very much. And now comes the frustrating part for all of you because we have other business we're going to do before we get to this discussion. So bear with us, we will get to the topic you all seem to be here to talk about. So the next item on the agenda is the report from board committees. The first agenda to discuss is the curriculum committee. Dr. Babson?
Okay, thanks for your patience. I just had to shuffle my notes there. Okay, so the board curriculum committee met on Tuesday, April 15th at 5:00 p.m. at the Radnor Township School District Administration Building, and we had a very full agenda. We had the English Language Development Curriculum Audit Presentation as well as the Social Studies Curriculum Audit Presentation. And we also discussed approval of the return of the books as we've been discussing or as we've heard much about in our public comment tonight. Just a little note on that, this matter, having been discussed there, was recommended to our business meeting agenda tonight, and you can see that as item 8.03. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. The facilities committee, Ms. Duffy.
Yes, the facilities committee met on April 15th at 7:00 p.m. Mr. Thornton and Ms. Solomon both had excused absences. We had an update on the Ithin project, really more from a schedule. We had a tree person there. Ms. Solomon, we're sorry you weren't there to ask your questions, but we had him there ready to answer. But we also—and then we did take a look at kind of—we talked about the bid preparation that's undergoing right now and the alternates that will be in that bid process. Now, we didn't move anything, there's nothing on the consent agenda to look at. It was really information only, and so we will be reviewing much of that information next week—I mean, next month—in the facilities meeting before moving it forward to the board. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Finance, Ms. Solomon.
Thank you. The finance committee met on April 8th. There are several items on the consent agenda that went through committee. They include the contract with American Capital for the purchase of the Surfrisco IV, the United Concordia contract for the district dental carrier, a contract with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for educational assistance, the contract with the Richard Karen Foundation for Behavioral Health Support, the contract with Christine McCloskey as a special education consultant to the district, and the Lakeside Youth Service Contract also for mental health support in the schools. We had the agenda item for the reappointment of the Radnor School Board member that will be the representative to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. And then lastly, we received the update of the proposed final general budget for the 2025-2026 school year. And I do have one question on an item that is on the consent agenda that did not go through our committee. It's a contract with St. Joe's University. Did that go through curriculum?
Yes.
Okay, so that was just grouped in with the finance items.
It was on curriculum.
It went through—
Because it's an academic affiliation.
Great, thank you, just clarifying. Our next meeting will be May 6th at 5:00 p.m. in the ground floor, the garden suite of the administration building.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. And the last update is about government relations and—
No, policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, I missed you at the bottom there.
That's okay.
Policy. Ms. Stern, you had a busy meeting this month, too.
We did have a busy meeting. So the policy committee met on April 8th. On tonight's consent agenda, we have six policies that are up for second read. Five of them are for adoption, one of them is for repeal. We also have two policies on the consent agenda that are up for first read. As an agenda item for discussion, we did discuss Policy 144.1. We had a fair bit of public comment. We had an overview and presentation by Mr. Becktoole, who I want to thank again for stepping in for Dr. Hand, and we're happy to see Dr. Hand here tonight, doing well. But we had a really robust conversation and explanation of the status of our policy. Now, I do want to clarify because I did hear one public comment that kind of led me to believe there might be a little bit of a misunderstanding. Policy 144.1 is our library selection process policy. The bulk of that policy is really about how the librarian chooses and considers and curates and cultivates the library books that are in our five libraries. There is one provision at the end of that policy that provides for the challenge—the challenge of a particular book, which has been the subject of so many public comment this evening, policy committee meetings, curriculum committee meetings. So we are not considering eliminating Policy 144.1. We will have had and will continue to have a policy that covers the selection process for the books that are in our libraries under the guidance of our librarians. As was discussed at our policy committee meeting on the heels of some public comment that was made, we did consider on April 8th the notion of what might it look like if we simply eliminate the option for an individual parent to challenge a book? So in that—we made no decisions, we had no intention of making any decisions at our April 8th meeting. We really wanted to take the time to discuss and understand this process, how we got here, hear what our different individual committee members feel about if we have a challenge policy, what might that look like, what should it constitute, the committee, the process, all of the various things that we did say that we wanted to hear and discuss after taking in a lot of public comment the last month or so. I think what we can expect to see at our next meeting, which will be Tuesday, May 6th, I think at 6 o'clock, but it will be publicized, is we will take under consideration two options of the policy. One will have the potential for a challenge, one will not. I don't know what our committee will discuss that night, I don't know what the community wants to give us in terms of feedback, but I wanted to be really upfront with you that that's probably what our May policy committee will look like as it relates to that one policy, is we will consider that and then after the May meeting and see what our committee says. You know, I expect that we'll have something to present at the May business meeting for a first read, and you know, let's see. But I've been really grateful for all the public comment and the input and the thoughtful conversation that we've had at our committee meeting. So that's a longer-than-usual report, I apologize, but there was really meaty, important things that we discussed. Thank you.
Never apologize for providing valuable information to your peers and to the community. Last item on the committee's review is the Government Relations and Communications Committee. We didn't actually meet this month, but most of the board members were able to attend—I had to leave early—a Legislative Breakfast that we have. And for people who don't know, this is a great opportunity. We invite our local legislators. So Lisa Barowski, who is our state rep, Amanda Capaletti, who's our state senator, and Mary Gay Scanlon, who was unable to—she's our U.S. rep to Congress. She was unable to attend, but she sent a representative. And they come and they meet with our staff and our administrators, and most importantly, I think, our students, oh, and board members, to talk to us about what it's like being a legislator, what it's like trying to represent us, but also to hear from us what it is we need, what we're looking for, what kind of help we need getting good support at the government level. And this year, I think there were some really valuable conversations. Something I've told people that really struck me in that meeting, and for the students who are listening, thank you, but I was really struck in a community where a lot of people can seem very privileged at how appreciative our students were at that meeting for Radnor education. And a number of them said that, how fortunate that they are, they know they're fortunate to grow up in Radnor. And I really appreciated their valuable contributions, but also their awareness of what it is to have an education in this community. We may or may not meet—I don't think government relations is slated to meet in May. We often meet kind of half the time, and we don't have anything active going on right now. So there's plenty going on, but we're not controlling it. So were there any community announcements? I usually do those later, but was anything? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the priority discussion and action items. 8.01 is the approval of the 2025-2026 Proposed Final General Fund Budget. So the recommended action here is that the board adopts the 2025-2026 Proposed Final General Fund Budget in the amount of $125,364,728, representing a real estate tax increase of .6084 mils, or 4.0% over the 2024-2025 taxes. I need a motion, or do we want to hear—okay, I need a motion? So did I get a motion? I didn't see the motion. Was that you, Ms. Solomon?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Duffy, may I get a second?
Thank you, Ms. Gerton. I think—do you want me to read this, or do you want Brian to give his presentation first? I'll read this, okay. So the next step in the budgeting process in accordance with Act 1 is for the Board of School Directors to adopt the 2024-2025-2026 Proposed Final General Fund Budget. Therefore, in conformance with the Special Session Act 1 of 2006, the board hereby authorizes the adoption of a proposed final general fund budget for the fiscal year 2526 in the amount, I stated before, at a mileage rate of 15.8193 mils. The budget will be available on the district website at least 20 days prior to the adoption of the final general fund budget, which will be on May 27, 2025. Administration will advertise the intent to adopt the final budget no later than 10 days prior to adoption on May 27, 2025. Okay. Dr. Bachelor, do you have something you want to say first?
Yep, just before we turn it over to Mr. Pauling. Mr. Pauling will provide a really quick overview. We've been working at this really since January. There's been several presentations at our finance committee meetings and also at our board meetings, so I want to thank all the board members for being involved in that process as we move forward. Tonight's budget vote is the proposed final. You will be, as you know, asked to vote on the final budget next month. Right now, this is set at the index. We are looking at and anticipating trying to come in below that by next month. So, Mr. Pauling, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pauling for share some slides and summarize some of the discussions we've been having the last few months.
Thank you. And Dr. Bachelor made a comment about the budget process and tonight being our proposed final budget and then final budget approval on May 27th. So procedurally, under Act 1, we are required to pass a proposed final budget at least 30 days before the final budget. So what we are presenting this evening is not our final budget. As Dr. Bachelor said, we have identified some additional adjustments to make which will be reflected in the final budget, which should get us under the 4% Act 1 index. But what we're presenting tonight is more of a procedural item. We do need to file this budget with the Department of Education and then do the normal requirements that are part of Act 1 for the advertising and posting of this budget before the final budget approval in May. So what I want to do tonight is just talk a little bit about the budget, and maybe a little beyond the numbers of it, but just some thought in, you know, what does this budget represent? And for Ms. Lau, I brought the quote back from before, and I will preface this to say, I may run out of these quotes. I don't know if you've ever tried to find quotes on education finance? So I've got a handful, but it might get a little tight after that. But I did want to bring this one back because I really think it's indicative of what we put into our budget process, that they are not just numbers, but it's an expression of our values and aspirations. And I think, you know, when we create this budget, you know, my primary responsibility is to look at the numbers, but we look at this globally from district staff, district administration, the board of directors, to say, what does this budget represent? And we try to build this budget around our core pillars, which are achievement, wellness, and belonging, and we have our district initiatives that are put into this budget every year, including the budget that we have next year. So just items related to district and student achievement, initiatives in our technology department related to AI, our MTSS program, our new Ithin elementary school, and then just some of the departments, our teaching and learning department with new textbooks for our ongoing curriculum refresh cycle, our technology refresh cycle, what goes into buildings and grounds to make sure that we maintain adequate facilities for our students and staff, and then our pupil services, who deals with our special education students and the needs that they have. And this is just a snapshot. We also have our other operational departments that go into this, such as our transportation department, things that aren't listed here, like what goes on in our buildings every day. Our buildings have a budget that are built into these numbers that go to the day-to-day resources that are needed to operate those buildings for our staff and our students. So when we look at the numbers and what the total budget represents, you could guess that most of our budget, over half of it, goes to instructional-related costs. Those are our regular education, our special education. Anything related to an instructional cost makes up almost 54% of our budget. And then those other support services make up close to 32%, and those include our guidance services, our library services, our administrative services. So everything that touches our student and staff, not just in the classroom but outside of that, is reflected in this budget as well. And then when you look at it from another lens, most of the costs in the budget go towards wages and salaries and employee benefits. Because we are a service-based organization, we need to provide staffing resources to educate the students of the district. And then we have other associated costs with the materials and the buildings and grounds and everything else that goes into providing those educational services. So this is just a snapshot of where we started and where we're at right now in the budget process. We started back in February with the preliminary budget at 4% tax increase with a $611,000 deficit. We were able to make some adjustments in March to reduce that deficit down to about $198,000. We made some small adjustments because of the timing between our finance committee meeting and the last board meeting and having to prepare the proposed final budget. We did remove a charter school subsidy that is not included in the governor's budget proposal for 2025. a charter school subsidy that is not included in the Governor's Budget Proposal for '25-'26, which would net a reduction in state funding for the district. And then just some small adjustments when we create our form that goes to the state, there's no cents involved. So the $1 and the $8 difference are all rounding adjustments that we have to make when we create that. So it did increase the deficit slightly, but as I stated before, we've identified some other adjustments which would narrow that deficit down to zero and then allow us to come under the 4%, which we'll be recommending at next month's meeting for the final budget. So where does our money come from to fund the resources that we need? So we, you know, we had a lot of discussion tonight about community. Looking at it from a different lens, I look at it from the community in the budget perspective that we fund almost 84% of our budget from local sources, mostly from our community. And if you look at other school districts in our area, Lower Marion, Tridiferen East Town, Upper Marion, they all have similar percentages as we do here in Radnor. It's very indicative of southeastern Pennsylvania. But when you look at it from statewide perspective, the statewide average is 51% locally funded. So you can see, you know, community is really important from a funding perspective, is part of our budget. So some of the things that we talked about that are in the budget, this is our debt schedule for the new Ithan Elementary School. So we phased in with this budget all of the required debt to build the new Ithan Elementary School as we currently have budgeted for the project. So that required nearly $3.5 million. So over the last two budgets, including the one coming up, we phased in the debt service payments. And until we make those debt obligations, we're putting those resources back into our buildings for other improvements that have been identified through feasibility study a number of years ago. So under Act 1, we have a capacity, it's called the Act 1 Index, that we can raise our taxes by every year, our real estate taxes. And this is just a snapshot of that historically. Act 1 was implemented in 2006. So this just shows, and we've highlighted this at previous meetings, that, you know, over the last number of years, we've come in under the Act 1 Index, in the last two years specifically, coming in under the index while also phasing in a significant amount of debt towards the Ithan project, as well as maintaining and enhancing everything that we've had programmatically and operationally across the district. I presented this at March's meeting, and it's just, again, not to point fingers at any of the other districts, but just to show from a comparative standpoint, where we stand on our millage rate and what a tax bill for a home that is worth, or a property worth $1 million in the district, what the tax bill would look like for that property owner. With Radnor being almost 82% residential tax base, you know, comparatively, we are lower than Tridiferen East Town and Lower Marion on a comparative tax bill, equalized between the millage rates and the common level ratio between each county. Upper Marion does have a lower bill, but you can see on the right, they only have a 40% residential tax base. They have a much higher commercial tax base, which helps them generate additional revenue as part of their budget. So this is a taxpayer impact slide that shows, based on an assessed value at three different levels, what their current tax bill would look like for the '24-'25 year, and then what those differences would be based on a 4%, a 3.5% and a 3% tax increase. So looking at the average, the $730,613,000 number in the middle column, if we would be at the index, the increase for that property owner would be $443. And then each percent that we would go under that is a $111 decrease. So those numbers are just showing illustratively at different assessed values what a possible tax bill may look like in July. So upcoming, we have the approval tonight for the proposed final budget. We have deadlines to post and advertise that budget. At our May 6 Finance Committee, we'll review the final budget, which will then move forward to our May 27 meeting. And with that, I'll open it up if there's any questions from the Board.
Any questions? Shirley, Ms. Solomon has questions.
Oh, Shirley, I do. First of all, I didn't get that presentation in my packet. I got something, just the repeat of what we had in committee.
We just updated it today, so it's posted. I'll get you a copy.
So could I just please get a copy of what you presented tonight? So I do not support this current budget as presented, and I've stated this throughout the entire budget process. I think a 4% overall increase is too much to ask of our, as you've so clearly stated, of our taxpayers. We are almost 84% locally funded by homeowners, and we all know the economic uncertainty that is occurring in our economy right now. The stock market is bouncing around, you know, several percentages up and down, usually down. And I don't think that saddling our community with this kind of an increase is prudent. And I'll tell you why. Because I was on this board back in 2009, when we had the economic downturn, and we were sitting here with labor contracts with 12 different unions that were at a 5% increase, rolling along happily, and all of a sudden, Act 1 was at less than 1%. And we were required to cut positions in the district and tighten our belt, and it was painful. And I vowed never to be on a board that had to cut positions. We're prudent when we add teaching positions. We do it for a reason. We have a ratio of how many students in each grade level per class. We have contingency teaching positions. If there should be a bump in a large grade, we can add another teacher. I don't want to be in the position where we're having contracts that are around 4% because that's what this budget allows for. We're also building a new elementary school, and I want to tell you, we do not have any of the contracts. It has not gone out for bid. What do you think is going to happen when you're building what is already a $75 million elementary school and you don't have any of your contracts back? So there's going to be tariffs on steel. There's going to be tariffs on all the inputs to that building. I don't know what that price tag is going to be. I think that we, so what I've learned, I've been on the board for 16 years, is that the best way to fund a school district prudently and fairly to everyone, so students get what they need, but fairly to taxpayers as well, so people can afford to live in our community and take advantage of our school, is to be consistent. So I would like to see, and I've said this all along, and there's differences of opinion, but I would like to see this budget more around 3%, more reflecting what I think is fair to everyone involved in this, that we're thinking, considering the people who are paying for this, but also the needs of the district. And I think it's just better to have a consistent flow of income. So if we go to 4% now, the forecasts are that, so Act 1 is based roughly on what they think inflation is going to be. Do any of you want to really forecast inflation with the economy the way it is right now? So I think that the best thing to do, knowing that most of our expenses are tied up in labor contracts that are usually four- or five-year contracts, the best thing to do is to stick at a very reasonable 3% moving forward. The forecasts were that the Act 1 Index is going to come down. I've seen it come radically down. When the economy is volatile like this, we don't know what that's going to look like. And I would hate to see us get embroiled in long-term contracts that we can't support at the same time we're trying to build a new school where we don't have any of our contracts, have not gone out for bid. I just, it's much too risky to me. So I do not support a 4% budget for next year. I've said that consistently. And so I'm hoping that the final budget that comes back next month is a little bit more conservative and I think a little bit more what I would call risk averse to what's actually going on in the economy. And those are my opinions, and everybody is entitled to what they believe.
I saw Ms. Stern raise her hand next.
Thank you. So, well, the what?
The rebuttal.
Yeah, kind of the, well, so Lydia, you and I have served together for now almost 12 years because I, this is, I'm in my 12th year on the Board, and we've done a lot of budgets together. And your message has been very consistent, and I really, I do appreciate and respect it. Mr. Pauling, could you put up the one slide that shows the difference between the, I think it's, thank you, this is the one, yes. So I do want to give a little bit of context because although I too hope that in the next month, the final budget comes back slightly under 4%, I am prepared to support the 4% budget. Regretfully, I wish that we could, you know, have things be, cost us lower. As Mr. Pauling pointed out, 84% of our budget does come from the local tax base. We are horribly underfunded at the federal level particularly and at the state level in education. It's, that is, that is not going to change. You are right. It is not going to change. I actually feel like we're at a really important juncture right now, given the uncertainty. I think that the community is depending on us to maintain the quality of the schools and maintain the quality and the value of your homes. That has been consistently something that Radnor is known for, is a high-quality education, and it is reflected in the value of our homes. It does come at a cost, and I wish that the federal government supported us more. We get less than $1 million from the federal government. I don't see that particular dynamic changing anytime soon, is the reality. But what I would like to point out here, and I think it's an important piece of information, and it's the reason that although I also hope that some numbers change in the next few weeks and that we can have a final budget that is slightly below 4%, the difference in any one taxpayer's pocket is, I think, as much as, depending on the assessed value of your home, it could be $100 or $150 difference, the difference between 3% and 4%. The difference in the aggregate, however, throughout the entire township, is the difference between closing our budget and having a balanced budget, which we are required to have, or not having a balanced budget, except for a small amount, right? Mr. Pauling, if you could pull up the sheet that shows that. I think it's a really important time right now for us to, to plan for what could be inevitable cuts at the federal level, what could be, what is an uncertain time with regard to the tariffs and what's going to happen with Ithan Elementary. You know, we have a building that we identified three years ago that needs to be replaced. The needs of those children in the building are not going to go away. It's just, they're not. And I'm, I'm really, there is no one up here who wants to be raising taxes. I promise you, there is no one up here who wants to be raising taxes. But I do feel a responsibility right now to preserve a high-quality education here in Radnor, and I guess we'll get more to what else my values are about Radnor in a future agenda item. But right now, I'm speaking about my values as they relate to the budget. And I think if Mr. Moore is still in the room, and I can't see if he is, I have actually thought about him often because he and I right now, you know, he used to talk about when we have the opportunity to raise taxes, is that the prudent thing to do? Because in a year or two, if the Act 1 Index goes down and I'm not able to raise taxes as much as I need, we could regretfully find ourselves in a situation as it relates to cuts, which gets to the next thing I do want to say. I have served on almost every negotiations committee that has been in my time on the Board. I've negotiated most every collective bargaining agreement, which means our unions, over the last few years. I promise you, I'm not talking about 4% tax, 4% raises. I am not, I am not having conversations with the administration, and we are not having conversations with the union about raising the contracts at 4% because they're right, we can't afford it. And I wish that we could. I want to say that to every member of every bargaining unit. I wish we could. And we will find ourselves in a financial hole that we will not be able to dig ourselves out of because I do believe that Ms. Solomon is right. The index will go down, and it will hamper our ability to raise taxes, and it will make it hard for us to meet our contract obligations, which are about 78% of our budget. So I have both sides of those financial pieces going on in my mind every time I sit down at the table to talk about a budget and to talk about a collective bargaining agreement. What I can promise you is that every time I sit down, I try really hard to think, as all of us do, really hard to try to balance those things. And I wish that we had a federal government that supported education more than they do right now, and I don't see that changing anytime soon. So I will support this, and I hope some numbers change slightly. Thank you.
Okay. I promise I will get to this side of the room, but I saw Ms. Lau next.
Thank you. I also echo a lot of Ms. Stern's comments. You know, and I appreciate Mr. Pauling for bringing back that quote that I love at the beginning, because I think it helps remind us all to reframe the budget as something that's a positive rather than just a negative and a hit to our pocketbooks because the budget is what allows us to achieve the things that are important to us, right? If you could put the slide back to the debt service table, you know, to me, this is a big driver, right? Obviously, the biggest driver are wages and salaries for our teachers and their benefits, which I think we can all agree. They are our most important resource, right? So we're going to do that. And honestly, pensions, that's hugely out of our control, and, but we're going to honor those commitments. So that's like 80% of our budget. So, you know, we're talking about, relative to that, all of these other items are, you know, not quite as significant. But another significant item that we've decided to take on is building a new Ithan Elementary. And if anyone has been paying attention to our facilities, committee meetings, you know, our committee has done this analysis years ago. And, you know, we came to the conclusion, not me personally, but the committee, came to the conclusion that it's actually the most prudent course of action is to build a new elementary school because it will be much more costly to our township and to our taxpayers in the long run to continue to patch, you know, and maintain our, the state of that building. So, you know, that is what it is. You know, if we believe that we need to build the new elementary school, we need to phase in, which I think the administration has done very carefully and very responsibly, you need to phase in the debt service obligations. And, you know, we started doing this a couple of years ago, and quite frankly, even to take it down from 4% to 3%, I would imagine Mr. Pauling would create a whole lot of rejuring on your part, right? You would have to rethink a lot.
It'd be the kicking the can down the road metaphor.
Yes, which we did for a lot of years. We, you know, so, but every time you kick the can down the road, the problem just gets worse, right? So I think we, as a board, have decided we're not going to be the board to kick the can down the road anymore. So that's why we're kind of undertaking this endeavor. And then just to Ms. Solomon's point about the Act 1 Index, and I agree, no one has a crystal ball, you know, no one can forecast, you know, entirely accurately where it's going to go. But the scenario that you referenced back in 2009, when it dropped all the way down to 1%, that's exactly the scenario we're trying to avoid here, right? Because if you come in lower than you need to during these years, then if it does drop, then we lack the ability to make up for that shortfall, and you might end up having to take drastic action, like, you know, widespread layoffs. And just a correction, the Act 1 Index is not just an inflationary measure. It's actually a combination of two factors. It's an inflationary index plus it's an index as to what economic experts expect employee wages to rise by. So it's a combination of those two factors, and they're both weighted equally. So economic experts literally are telling us that they expect employee wages to rise by this amount, and therefore, your point about whether we can expect Radnor residents to bear, whether they can bear this increase, like, economic experts are actually telling us, yes, like, they actually expect, you know, employees to be able to bear a 5% increase. If I can just finish. So, you know, I trust, I'm not an economic expert. I tend to trust the experts in their areas of expertise. So, you know, I agree, even they can't predict for sure, but they can sure do it better than I can. So I, I'm willing to rely on the expert judgment of the people who published Act 1 Index. I'm also inclined to rely on the, you know, the judgment of our administration in terms of how we can responsibly meet our debt obligations, maintain our stellar credit rating, and deliver on the excellent experience that includes a new elementary school, but just generally speaking for our Radnor students. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. You okay? Okay. Who has a number here?
I mean, I would echo everything Ms. Lau's just said. And, and to be clear, the, the 4%, and hopefully, as Ms. Stern said, slightly under over the next two weeks, I know you're working on that, but that, that is really a maintenance budget with recognition that we're taking on Ithan. But that's over the years, so you've...
Yeah, we, when we developed this budget, the administrative team and I, we, you know, we work over a number of months to go through the budget and make sure that, you know, anything that's in there has good justification to be in there. So this isn't just something like we get to the end of the road and say, oh, now we've got to, we've got to fix this. So this is a conscious decisions that we make through the budget process to get us here. And when we get to this point, when we do start talking about, you know, landing at a final number, what we may have to start talking about a reduction of services to get that number lower. There's not a whole lot of fluff in what we do, but with this budget, and I think it was mentioned, like, you know, we, we have an obligation to the community to maintain the high standards of the educational experience that we give here, on top of balancing our AAA credit rating and, and building a new elementary school. So it's, there, there's a lot of different factors and balls in the air when we put this together. And so we're very conscious as an administrative team to make sure that we're balancing all of those things along with, you know, not overburdening our, our community as part of the process.
And thank you. I, I appreciate that. And then, like Ms. Lau said, we're maintaining our credit rating, which actually has benefit to us when we borrow our money. So, you know, I, I thank you for really managing our budget so skillfully that we are in this, you know, good position. And the only thing I'd add is that, you know, we talk about, Ms. Stern saying, the federal government contribute more, you know, Pennsylvania is no prints on this front. I mean, we are one of the lowest contribution states for public education. So, you know, the burden, they, based on the way they fund our public schools, the burden is on the local residents.
And just to kind of add to that...
I think it ranks 47th in the state, right? I mean, in the country.
In this country.
47th for their contribution to local education.
And if you look at our 15 and 1/2% of revenue from state sources, half of that is our reimbursement for payroll fringe benefit taxes. So the other half of that is basic subsidy, special education, transportation. So that's just to conceptualize that 15%, half of it is a reimbursement for costs of pension and social security taxes.
So the full-on contribution from the state is closer to 8%?
Yeah, the, the real number, yeah.
That's helpful to understand. Well, and I thank you again. The piece I was going to ask was the maintenance. I think, you know, that actually, Mrs. Solomon, is one of your lines most years, the, is this a maintenance budget? You know, we're not out buying something extravagant. I, I do think it's important to remind, and I, I know you think like this, but sometimes when times are good, we, we do a lot of extra little things. And I do think it's time, you know, the same way most of us are doing at home, to say, gosh, it's time to tighten our belts, and maybe we need to think about, you know, waste here, or how much do we really need this, and, you know, even little things, right? Everything you print, it's paper and ink and wear and tear on a copier. I mean, it seems silly, but, and I don't think we're doing nearly as much of that as we used to. And I recognize I'm part of the problem with my bu, my paper binder. But maybe that's the incentive I need, right? Look, I, I actually return all the materials and the supplies and the binder clips to the district office to be reused. But I, you know, we can all do more, and our community can do more in the buildings. It seems like pennies, but we'd much rather save pennies now than lose a teacher later. I think all of us can agree on that. Can I just ask a question? I was surprised by the 28% of our budget that goes to benefits. And it shouldn't have surprised me, but this year it just struck me, that 28.3. Is that because, is that where Peasars falls in there?
Yeah.
Okay, so a lot of that's the retirement fund.
And so this is the trickery of it. We, we have the full expense of those costs, this is the accounting of it. So the full amount of the costs for pension and social security are in the employee benefits as well as what we offer from medical, dental, long-term disability, prescription benefits. And then half of that is netted back as that revenue from the state. So it shows in full on the expense side, it's really netted half on the revenue side to what the actual cost is.
Okay. Yeah, the total number didn't strike me, but this I was looking, I was like, that's more than half the cost of the wages.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that clarification.
Yep. And the pension rate being 34%, it's been exacerbated over the last 15 years when that number was under 5%, and now is at 34%.
Okay. I think the clarification for the community, it's not that we have Cadillac healthcare plans for our teachers and staff, and it's not that...
Yeah.
They do fine, but it's, it's not like we're being overly generous in that situation.
And, and that pension obligation is required.
Right.
So we have no choice on how much we, the rate is set, and we are obligated to pay that to make up for the shortfall.
I'm not arguing about Peasars, I promise.
Yep.
Okay, so then the, the last question I had, and I, I know I'm not going to manage to pin you to a number because I, I know you well enough. When you say you're going to come in under 4%, can we manage expectations for people who've sat through this in the audience, but also for the board? Are we talking 3.95 like last year, or are we talking, you might make it down to 3.5?
I'd say 3.5 is probably a little aggressive. I'd say somewhere under 3.9.
Okay.
Yeah, we should be under 3.9.
I mean, and, and I think we saw this, right? It's not a huge number in terms of an increase from last year, but I think everyone appreciates we pay very high taxes in Radnor for the benefits we get. So every little different, every little dollar makes a dollar. Every dollar is another dollar we have to earn.
Yep.
Yeah, it is, I hear it. Any other comments, or can we vote on this? Okay, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor, say aye. I have 8 to 1. All those in favor say, all those opposed, say nay. My opposed is Ms. Solomon. Okay, the next item on the agenda is something we typically would do in consent agenda, but Ms. Solomon always has to pull it, so you don't need to vote on this, you're not going to abstain, you're going to abstain from this vote anyway. This is the resolution to appoint a school board member to the Delaware County Intermediate Units Board. The act, the proposed, recommended action is that the following candidate be recommended to serve on the DCIU Board of Directors for a term commencing on July 1st, 2025 and ending on June 30th, 2028. Administration is requesting that Dr. Andrew Babson be appointed as a candidate to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for a term commencing on July 1, 2025 and ending on June 30th, 2028. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Do we need any conversation about this?
Thank you.
No? Oh, yeah, thank you, Dr. Babson, for volunteering.
My pleasure.
Okay, can I, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, I have 8 in favor, and Ms. Solomon has to abstain as an employee of the DCIU.
No, she's just absent from the vote because she's not on the dis.
Sarah? I've abstained as well.
Oh.
No, why did you, you don't have to abstain from your own vote.
You don't have to abstain.
Okay.
No. We're going to go 8-0.
Ms. Dun, she, because she's just absent from the dis.
She's absent, okay.
She's just not a part of the vote.
Okay. No, you're, you may vote for yourself. Next item on the agenda, 8.03, approval of the return of the following books to the Radnor High School Library, Gender Queer by Maya Khabib, I may have said that wrong, Blankets by Craig Thompson, and Fun Home by Alison Bechtel. So the recommended action is, I don't need to read both of these. Which one do you want me to read?
Whichever.
Okay. The recommended action is that the board approve the return of the following books to the high school library. Gender Queer by Maya Khabib, Blankets by Craig Thompson, and Fun Home by Alison Bechtel.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. May I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Lau. Before we start, usually I just kick it off and let everybody have conversation. I wanted to just clarify a couple of things that I've heard in public comments repeatedly and just kind of lay some groundwork here. So first, I want to apologize to the community that we haven't had this conversation before you earlier. We had an unfortunate confluence of events. The three of us had to miss the March meeting, and a couple other people had to participate remotely. That doesn't really foster good conversation, and it looks inappropriate for a small portion of the board to make a decision that's clearly so important to so much of the community. So I apologize that we were unable to talk about this last month. I also want to clarify, just, there've been, some people say, you know, this person removed it, the board removed. These books were properly removed under a policy that has been in place since 2008 by a duly-appointed ad hoc committee. To our knowledge, the policy was followed, and I think it was followed in good faith. I don't think anyone here is questioning that, but I've heard it sometimes, and I just want to be very clear, that's not the spirit in which the board is having this conversation. Also, I think, I think the fact that we're having this conversation, I don't think we think they were banned, they were removed from the library, and we want to have a conversation about what the community believes and what the board believes belongs in the library. There was one public comment towards the end that said that the failure to have these books in the library is a harm to a curriculum item. The class in which that book is used, it's used as an optional book on a list. That assignment was actually already handled earlier in the year, so there's no harm to the students in that class specific to being able to borrow a book for that paper. That was, Mr. Rosen mentioned that. And I, I also wanted to clarify, I know this came up, I think it's come up a couple times, but I want to confirm for the public that our council has confirmed that these books, the images in these books do not constitute pornography. And finally, it doesn't, it doesn't mean they belong in the book, library, I just want to say that, like, that's, that's a baseline we're going to go with. And finally, I, I just want to say, this, you're going to hear, I don't think it's a heated discussion, it's passionate. A lot of people on this board, I think most of us have read the books. I went out and had to buy two of them because I didn't want to wait till the library books got circulated, and I had read one of them already before. We're going to have a conversation, and then there are some people, I, I believe there's at least one board member who wants to raise an issue of perhaps moving this, the vote to a later date. I would ask that, you have all been such great members of the public, and you've been so respectful in everything you've done, I would ask that you give the board the grace to have these conversations. I have asked that before anything be tabled or delayed, or a motion be brought for that, that the full board be able to discuss the issue before us because I think we owe it to you as a community, having delayed this a month, to, to have that conversation. I want to thank all of you for coming to repeated meetings. People who aren't here, who've brought opposing points of view, I want to thank them as well. I think it's important for all of us to have earnest and respectful conversation in this community. So thank you all for coming, thank you all for sitting through our other business. And now I'm going to kick it off. Anybody have a preference? Anybody want to start? Oh, so I, well, I have a motion and a second already, so now I'm just opening the floor to conversation. Ms. La Solomon, you want to?
Sure, I will kick this off. So I have put a great deal of thought into this, the discussion about these books, Gender Queer, Fun House, and Blankets. I have read all these books, and I think it's time that we respond to the community on this. It would have been my preference, as Ms. Dun stated, to do this at the last meeting. However, out of really a professional courtesy to my fellow board members, there were only four of us in attendance, I was one of them. I didn't think it was fair to have that conversation with five of the members not being present. So unfortunately, yeah, you were virtual. But anyway, so here we are today. So I want to make it clear, this is my opinion, first of all, that the administration and the committee that they convened did their job according to the school board policy. And so I don't want anyone to take any notion that there was anyone at fault. It's also really important to me to say that I voice my full support for our librarians in this district. I have so much respect for them. I think they were put in a really unfair position, and so I think it's really important that, as a board member, I tell you how much I support you and I respect what you do. And I think you do an exemplary job, and this was a tough spot to put you guys in. So I'm going to take this conversation in a little bit different direction than a lot of the public comment tonight. So first of all, I am assuming positive intent on everyone involved in this process. And what I mean by that is that I'm assuming positive intent on the part of people that are putting forth challenges to these books. I don't know them, so these are my assumptions. I think that they're trying to make an attempt to protect the innocence of children. I'm going to tell you why I don't think that that is the correct way to achieve that goal. Okay, so first of all, we know enough about child psychology to know that if teenagers hear that there is a controversy involving a book or a series of books, that's the book they're going to want to read. So if you, if your goal in this was to try to, you know, keep this material away from young people, you totally failed by this exercise. So, and I don't mean to make light of it, but truly, this has just made these like on the number one Radnor reading list, so didn't work that way if that was what they wanted to do. Okay. So I believe one of our students stated in the policy committee last month that, you know, the, these aren't the most explicit sexual content that they've seen. By time our students are in high school, and, you know, this is just maybe very unfortunate for our society, but they have seen so much more explicit violence and sexual content than these graphic novels. I, I just don't believe that these are shocking to high school students, unfortunately. These are drawings. So that's my opinion. So to me, the complex topics discussed in these books outweigh, you know, any argument about the distastefulness of the drawings in these books. I read these books, I thought they were really valuable. It's my understanding that these are award-winning books, these are memoirs, so these are courageous people that were willing to tell their story of coming of age. So these are coming-of-age memoirs. What could be more valuable to young people than this is the, you know, experience of just another person? So there is value in exposing teenagers to this type of literature. The authors are grappling with complex topics, which teenagers should do, questions about religion and questions about their sexuality. And so what better way to explore that than through literature? Okay, I'm specifically going after the challenges in, the challenges to these books. The challenge was put forward to the superintendent. So one of the things in the challenge, I believe, or this was part of the discussion anyway, was that these, these books are age inappropriate. And I just want to say to you, there's students in our high school through age 22. So those are adults, and so it's totally appropriate for adults to have access to this material. Okay, I also believe it was stated in the challenge that these books are grooming students for sexual abuse. So I want to explore that idea because that was put forth in the challenge. And so some of the things I might say might be disturbing to some people in this audience. So according to the National Center for Victims of Crimes, one in five girls and one in 20 boys is a victim of child sexual abuse. Excuse me, of child abuse. This includes, excuse me, this includes physical, sexual, and emotional abuse. I, I need to correct that. One in five girls and one in 20 boys is a victim of child abuse, which includes child sexual abuse. Okay. Then within that subset, discussing child sexual abuse explicitly, which is what grooming would be referring to, according to RAIN, which is the Rape Abuse and Incest National Network, and that's the largest anti-sexual violence organization, one in nine girls and one in 20 boys under the age of 18 experience sexual abuse or assault. So these are horrifying statistics that should upset and concern everyone here about So, these are horrifying statistics that should upset and concern everyone here about the welfare of our children. However, that is the reality of what they are experiencing. So, if we want to help protect children from abuse, I believe that one thing we can do is to arm them with information. Because one of the weapons of child sexual predators is secrecy. They tell the child that they're very special, and that the child should not tell anyone about their special secrets. Well, I believe that access to these books can help children understand the behavior of a predator. So, by allowing students access to these books, you are actually arming the child with information that they need to, to protect themselves. The child can discuss, or the student can discuss the content of the book with a trusted adult. So, by allowing these books in circulation, you're increasing a child's efficacy in dealing with a very serious situation in our society. So, to keep students uninformed about the occurrence of child sexual abuse is not in a child's best interest. So, I believe that we need to provide our students with access to this type of information. So, these are just some of the reasons that I believe that these books should be returned to the library. And I'm just going to touch on this briefly. I have a slightly different view of the policy, because I do support the idea that parents should have the ability to challenge materials in the library. This policy, and there's a bit of misinformation about that, too. We did look at this policy in 2013. We adopted a whole bunch of policies from PSBA. And so, when we looked at it, we adopted that policy. Granted, that was a long time ago, it probably definitely needs to be looked at, but I don't have so much of a problem with that policy, because I think parents should have that ability. I just had a real, real problem with the outcome of this particular process, and so we are taking the time now, I hope, to correct that. So, those are my opinions on this, and I will firmly support putting those books back in the library for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon, for breaking the ice. Who's next? Go ahead, Ms. Lau.
Thank you. I honestly don't have much to add beyond the public comments that we've heard tonight and at the many previous meetings during the past several months, which were just so thoughtful, informed, sincere, you know, and to me, it just meant that democracy is alive and well, at least in Radnor Township. And I was just so heartened by this groundswell of people who cared enough, right, to spend hours on a weeknight to come before us and share their opinions and their thoughts in a very civil and respectful manner. And I especially enjoyed and appreciated hearing the perspectives of those of you who spoke from your own unique lived experiences, especially our young people, our actual current students at Radnor High School and Middle School. So, you know, to me, you know, everything felt really sincere and authentic, and not at all orchestrated by some extreme left-wing organization like Red Wine and Blue. I think, like their name says, they actually enjoy getting together to drink wine together, so I don't know how that can be extreme. So, so for me, you know, at the same time, you know, I want to thank the ad hoc, the members of the ad hoc committee for their service and their work, a lot of whom are, were volunteers. It was not an easy task that we asked them to take on, and I, like Ms. Solomon, am inclined to impute the best of intentions to everyone involved, because good people can disagree, and, and that's actually the heart of our democracy. And to one of the public commenters tonight, who said this is more about, you know, more than, it's, it's about more than just these three books, right? Like, I do think it's about something bigger than that. It's about kind of a fundamental core tenet of our democracy, which is the free exchange of ideas. And, you know, and I just would urge everyone to continue to extend that grace and benefit of, of the doubt, no matter what the outcome is tonight, you know, and that you continue to respectfully disagree if, if there are others who have different opinions. But, you know, I was going to kind of base my remarks on my own lived experience and training as a lawyer and a former English major in college, but I think, you know, hopefully we've settled the legal question, it's not just our own solicitor, but, you know, I, I think Radnor Township Police and the District Attorney of Delaware County actually agree that it's also not child pornography, because otherwise, you know, the police report that was, you know, or that, you know, they filed, I think they would have acted upon that if they agreed with that legal interpretation. I won't go into my own legal interpretation of that, but, you know, but the Supreme Court test, actually, it's not for pornography, but it's for obscenity. It's the three-part test, and Mr. Rosen previously mentioned that one of the factors is whether the work is entirely devoid of literary, artistic, educational, or political merit. And I read these books, they are astonishing works of art. And it actually reminded me of my own high school's experience when I read Mouse: A Survivor's Tale for the first time, and this was back in 1992, I think, when graphic novels were not yet kind of broadly accepted as like, respected works of art. They were still derived, derived as comic books and cartoons. And I remember going to an interview with my dream college, I was a junior, I guess at the time, or senior, and it was with an alum of the school, and he asked me, what was the last book that you read? And I was honest, I told him about Mouse, and he had never heard of it, and I immediately regretted it, because the look of skepticism on his face, he was like, so the last book you read was a comic book about the Holocaust? And I just was like, oh my God, I'm never getting it, I'm never getting it. So, I tried to explain to him why this was actually a serious book. Thankfully, I still got into my dream school, but I remember just, you know, like, I was stressed, because, you know, I had a hard time defending and, and articulating to him why I enjoyed the book so much, and how, why I thought it was an incredible book. He was very skeptical. But, to me, you know, these books rival that in terms of, you know, I agree with the previous commenters, you know, the images, the art elevate the message that these books are trying to convey, because they're difficult messages, they're challenging, they're complex. And, you know, just like they do in Mouse, like, to me, it's the confluence of the words and, and the, you know, and the, and the images on, on, on the pages that make them so evocative, affecting, moving, so I can't see how anyone could come to the conclusion that they lack literary merit or artistic merit. I mean, they're incredible works of art. So, you know, to me, you know, I just want to reiterate, I also respect the work of the committee, you know, my vote will be in no way a judgment on them, we can disagree, it's totally fine. But I just wanted to share kind of where I was coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you. A lot of what's been said tonight, I completely agree with. Someone specifically said that they were appalled by the idea of book banning, and I totally agree with that. I think there's been some really fair criticism about our processes, and I, I think this is an opportunity that we've committed to, to improving. I've read all three of the books, I don't think that we should have considered them together, I think that was one of the, the criticisms, because that starts to attract attention to the overall issue. I think Fun Home specifically has vocabulary that I was looking up almost every page. So, I think there's a lot of value, and I do not think the books should be out of the library. My concern is that this is not the end of this, and if we make a decision today that just puts the books back into the library, that we may be susceptible and open ourselves to problems down the road. I think it's crucial that we follow a deliberate, meaningful path to getting these books back in the library. Tonight, it would feel great to put these books back in the library, but I think we might have problems down the road, and that's what I wanted to avoid.
Mr. Thornton, can I ask you, before you move on, what problems you think you, we would have? Because I'm just, I know we heard in policy last month, and I'm not trying to interrupt her, I just want to make sure people understand. I know we heard in policy, we have full authority to do this now.
Absolutely. I, we certainly have full authority. I think when you find a decision that you disagree with, and the board just changes it, I think that can lead to a precedent down the road. Just because this board looks like this today, it may not look like this four years from now, six years from now, but we're setting up a precedent where it's okay to say, hey, we didn't like that, we're just going to change it. And I think it's imperative to change the processes and the procedures to solidify that change.
Thank you. Ms. Stern?
So, I echo many of the comments, thanking the committee, I, I believe the process was followed. I didn't serve on the committee, so it is not my place to opine on the work that they did, I was not part of that work. I'm being asked tonight to make a different consideration, to, to give a different thought, and I really want to thank you, Ms. Dunn, for clarifying, you know, the, the board did not remove these books. A process that is, was, that occurred under the policy, under my watch, our watch as a board, removed these books. And I'm grateful, actually, that we're going, that we've had an opportunity to have some really thoughtful, robust discussions about that policy. And I actually think this process, although it's been very painful for people, and I'm regretful of that, I think it's going to land us on a policy that is going to best serve our community and its values. My feelings, my thoughts on whether or not to take action tonight have evolved over time. There was a public comment who referenced, I made a public comment last month where I felt pretty strongly we should address the policy, make a change to the policy, and then circle back to consider these books. And my thinking on that has evolved primarily because of the conversation we had in our policy committee meeting last month where, or earlier this month, when we were able to clarify that I already have the authority as a board member to reinstate these books back into the library. I don't need to change a policy to do that, I have that authority under school code. And after serving on the board for 12 years, and I guess that's twice tonight, we've referenced our long tenure, Lydia, you know, I've seen some things, I've been through some things on this board. Six weeks after I joined the board, I voted for full-day kindergarten. That, that was, that was 12 years ago, folks, and I know that there are students in the audience who went to full-day kindergarten, and there are parents who probably came to those meetings and voiced their opinion. To your point, Ms. Lau, that was democracy. But the reason I'm saying that is, there are, there have been times on this board where it was really important that I take a stand and make my beliefs known, because there was a community that voted me in the office, based on what they believed my beliefs were. And this is one of those moments for me where it's important that I just state my beliefs, because you, you elected me to represent your beliefs, and if you don't agree with me, you should not vote for me. I have said that many times over the years. So, the books belong in the library. Now, the reason that they belong in the library, for me, predominantly comes from that we have professional librarians who, we wrote a policy and said, we give it to you to, and task you with the responsibility to curate and cultivate a library collection that reflects the needs of that building. And I would never expect the library at one of our elementary schools to look anything like the library at our middle school or our high school. It's why we have, we are blessed to have five qualified librarians and five, five librarian, library collections. And so, first and foremost, you know, our librarians evaluated these books, and they found literary merit. Now, I have subsequently read all three books, and I say this as a person who does not like graphic novels. I really don't like graphic novels. And still, I was able to appreciate the literary value of these books. And as Mr. Rosen is still here, I think I could even write an English paper about why he selected that book for his English class, because like Mr. Thornton, I needed to look up some words, and it was about one of the most difficult literary works I've, I've read in a long time. And I could really appreciate why that book was selected as a supplemental book. And I don't like graphic novels at all. But I trust their judgment, and I believe in that process of library selection on their part. And, and I'm not going to be the person that, but that, that thinks I know better than our professionals. But, the community asked for my opinion, so I'm going to say, I understand the literary value of those books, and I think they are very mature and very graphic novels. They are very graphic, and they are not appropriate for our elementary or our middle school libraries. And guess what? They're not there. They're in the library that serves the students who are facing those really difficult life challenges. And my family is full of all the colors of the rainbow. I got them all. I got, I have gay, I have trans, I have non-binary. I have all the colors of the rainbow in my big Irish Catholic family. And they need to feel valued, and they need to feel worth, and the way they feel that is to see themselves expressed in literature. And so, for those parents who, I will also give the positive aspersions to their reasons for the challenges that have come before us, they only want, you know, the best for their children and the best for all children. And so, I'm going to choose to see that in there, but I'm going to respectfully disagree when it comes to these books, and I'm going to say something else. Books are not the problem if you're worried about children. This is the problem if you're worried about children. Yes, I'm holding up my cellphone. Social media is the problem if you're worried about your children's well-being. Their 24-hour access to the internet is the problem if you're worried about your children's well-being. It's not books. There's not a study, and I asked some professional people in this community, whose judgment and, and background and experience I really respect, I said, are there any studies that show that books cause anxiety and depression in students, in, in kids? And the answer is no. There are studies that show not being represented in the literature you read causes anxiety and depression and stress. There are studies that show that reading books that challenge your ideas and your thoughts and that make you uncomfortable grow your empathy. But the books themselves are not the problem. So, I'm, I'm, I believe the books belong back in our library, and given the information that I got from our solicitor la, two weeks ago, that I already had the authority to place these books back in the, the library, although my original thinking was that we should revise the policy fully. Now that we are considering, at least the committee is considering, sending forth a policy that won't even have a challenge option, I actually specifically asked our solicitor, if we don't have a challenge, then we're not going to have an appeal, how would we maybe be able to consider placing these books back in the library? And he said, you already have that authority. So, I feel like tonight was the night, the nine of us are here, the community is asking us to vote, they certainly asked us for our opinion, so now you heard mine, and I, I no longer feel the need to wait. And Mr. Thornton, to your point, which I think is a really valid one, I think that the, the current policy, if, if we were to have another challenge, the current policy doesn't provide a timeline for us to take up another challenge. So, I think that should that happen, I would, I would respectfully ask our board leadership to get guidance from our solicitor, what would be the appropriate way to proceed, and I think that there will be a very appropriate way for us to proceed. But I, I think we need to, to put a rest to this because one of the other things I learned going through full day kindergarten, masking, and our change to the mascot, was sometimes you just have to take a vote and, and respect the vote and move on. And the, this is our first opportunity to vote. So I assure everyone in the community and this board, however this vote goes tonight, you know, I will respect it. I won't be looking to undo or overdo. I will respect it even if I disagree with it because that's what it means to take a vote and move on. But I just, for me, tonight is the night to do that. I don't really feel the need to prolong this and to continue to ask or to continue to expect that community members will come out and, and share their very heartfelt comments. And I most especially thank the students who have, who have, and, and the people who have shared their personal stories of, of their experiences, and I'm really grateful that you did that. It, it is the point of why memoirs are written. People want to have, want to bear witness to their life. That's the point of a memoir. And it's not for me to stand in judgment of if it was the right story. It was a story that had meaning, and it resonates for people. And that's, they belong back in the library.
I'm going to start down at this end. Does anybody want to start? Go ahead.
I can't say that I, I don't agree with any of the things that you, that you've said. The first thing that I do want to acknowledge, though, is, is all of the people that came out for public comment. It was, I, I want to express my empathy for them. The last thing that we want to do as school board members is to cause any distress among any of the students. It's, it was not our intent, it was not the intent of the original policy. We all recognize that it's flawed, it needs to get changed. I do agree with Ms. Stern that, that 144 should be split, that we keep the, the weeding process to the librarians. And by the way, I am in support of giving the authority to the librarians and the, and the administration on what books get selected for the librarians. If anyone has ever been on a committee that hires people in Radnor knows how rigorous that process is, and we have really, really talented, talented staff, we're lucky we have that. So, so that's, you know, that was one, really another important thing that I do want to emphasize, not just the librarians in the high school, but the middle school and the elementary school librarians also. Let's leave, let's leave those to the professionals. We, as a school board member, we're, we're guided by policy. We're, we're here to make sure that, that our processes are, are followed correctly and accurately. And so I do, my, my concern in that if we, you know, by the way, yes, I think we're in alignment. I'm hearing that we're in alignment. We believe that the, the books should be put back in the library. When those books get put back is the concern that I have. So if they get put back today, there is no reason why they can't be challenged again. I do feel that it would be, it would be in the best interest if we do wait until the policy is done. And there, you know, I, I can't say for sure how it's going to end up. I would be in favor of, of creating a policy that doesn't give a mechanism for a challenge. I think what was really concerning through this process is the amount of time that our administration has devoted and committed to this process to making sure that it's, it's going to be effective and, and adhere to our, our mission statement. And again, the last thing we want to do is to cause any distress, especially among the students. But the silver lining in all of that is that we're, you know, we're committed to changing this policy for all of you. I do have to, I had, I do have to give credit to one public commenter tonight and what he expressed and what the true danger is in our schools. So thank you for that. I think that that's an important thing to remember as we go through this. So, it's been, it's been really, really hard, and it's been hard for the librarians, and I, and I'm sorry for that. I hope that, you know, however it ends up tonight, whether we do it now or whether we do it on, hopefully by sixth, June 10th, and have the policy approved by then, I hope that, that we can create something that, that really can, comes back to our mission statement with a sense of belonging. Thank you.
Ms. Curtin?
I'm 100%. Oh, on your mic. I'm 100% sure that I cannot be as eloquent as my colleagues up here, but I'm going to give it a try. First of all, I feel at the top of all the things that I'm feeling. I feel really, really proud of our community over the last two months that we've been considering this topic. I've been asked to think about things that I wouldn't have thought about. And over those two months, we've heard some incredible stories, personal stories, comments, and just, just starting with the students, we live in a pretty amazing place, and our professionals in this school district are top-notch, and we are seeing this in real time. And we're seeing democracy actually at work. Mr. Froelich, you said it may not seem like a big thing. It actually is a big thing, and it starts here. And I think that here in this community, we're seeing firsthand that our voices really matter. And I believe that to honor those voices and to honor our professionals and our community, I mean, even the, even the budget conversation, you see how well-run everything is here. I think that we need to give it the time to honor it by vetting a policy so we have strong footing to say definitively, these books belong back in the library. My favorite place, if anyone's ever been to New York City and been to the Strand Bookstore, there's a table right on the first floor, which is banned books. I go right there. I'm always so curious as, you know, what in our past predecessors thought was worth banning. And I don't mean to make light of what the topics are in these three books. I appreciate DJ that comment on, we shouldn't be thinking of them as three. We should be thinking of these things individually and how, what the impact is for all of our students in our community. And I so appreciate and am grateful for this opportunity that our community has to hear our voices, as painful as that is. I agree with Ms. Rosenbloom. Nobody wants people to feel othered or harmed or hurt. But if we, we can't move forward with rectifying those feelings if we just quickly make decisions and not give it the full time and attention that it warrants. So that would be my feeling at this point, is to value this process, value the process.
I think that's up to you and Dr. Babson. Thank you, Ms. Curtin.
Okay. So first of all, I think a lot of points have been made tonight that are, if I had to make them again, it would just be sort of reduplication. But I will start with thanking our community for coming out and voicing their opinions. And I think something that I alluded to in the curriculum meeting last week, providing some guidance for us on how our community feels about these things. And that is part of our job, as Ms. Stern was saying, is responding to our community and listening and weighing that with our own, our own judgment. I will say that as a person who has been kind of near or at the center of this process as both a member of the committee, as the representative of the board on the committee, the chair of the curriculum committee, and also on the policy committee, this has been an issue that has been top of mind for me for the past few months. And I will say something that I think might not be surprising from, let's say, the perspective of a researcher. So when you find discrepant information or you find yourself in a position of uncertainty, you, you keep looking and you, you keep your mind open to new data. And especially if you're mistaken, what you do is you see that as an opportunity to learn, and you see that as an opportunity to enlighten yourself a bit. And so as difficult as some aspects of this process have been for me personally in the sense of causing some stress, I think that in a way I have learned quite a lot, just on a personal level. But then radiating out, you think about how one's decisions may or may not affect the community at large. One thing that I did soon after the committee meeting that in retrospect I might have done earlier is to reach out to a good friend of mine in a local art community that I am a part of, an active part of. And as a trans person, they had some perspective on this particular issue that frankly just kind of blew my mind and provided a level of insight that I never would have expected, probably should have expected. But it turns out that their own life history corresponded pretty closely to some that were talked about in all three books, especially in Blankets, as being the victim of a, being a victim of child abuse themselves. And I won't reveal her name, just out of politeness and deference to her privacy, but there's something that I wanted to, to share. You know, I've taken lots of notes during this process. And one thing that she said really hit home for me was that for her, she grew up in a very small town in Ohio and in a, in an evangelical Christian community, and she did not have access to a library, a public library. So part of my reflection during this process has been, well, we have a public library that can have a wider range or purview, right, than a school library. But I didn't think that there could be some communities out there that don't have that luxury, right, that don't have a public library that might have a wide range of materials available. Another thing she mentioned is that for her, and this is a quote, the school library was her only safe place to be. I had never thought about that. And it's because as, you know, a white, cisgender, heterosexual male, these are just blind spots. And hearing from her story, it, it really changed my, my perspective on things profoundly. Couple other things that I'd like to share, and then I want to make a few general points. So she said that Blankets would have helped her not to be ashamed, and Fund Home depicted the exact situation. I want to echo something that Ms. Solomon referred to, again, something that I did not think of. But she said that having these books in the library and having them being part of public conversations actually worked against the very concerns that the parent had, right, about sexual abuse, about grooming, et cetera, right? And the quote from my conversation with my friend was, people not knowing these things happen makes it possible that they will happen. Again, because this is not part of my subjective experience, I just didn't, I had a blind spot about it. I just didn't think about it. So talking to my bright, wonderful friend and having her tell me, I've known her for a long time, have her tell me these things I've never heard from her before, frankly was just basically transformative for me and really made me think that I need to really learn more about this particular issue. So just reading about the American Library Association, what it is, more about the profession of librarian, you know, and thinking about our wonderful librarian, Michelle, and just learning more about that profession and the judgment, the professional judgment and professional vision that goes into the process of selecting books. And again, a learning process for me. I have a PhD in education, I teach at Penn, I've been working there for many years. It just goes to show that education is so wide and so vast, so complicated, that you can't know everything about it. So it was humbling to learn more about that. So just to wrap up a few things, there are a number of things about the policy that I would like to comment on, but I would like to save that for the policy committee and those particular meetings. But I think that, I, I do want to respect a concern that has come up, which is that we do need to think about process and precedent. There's an open and uncertain future about future board members, future members of the administration, so I do understand that concern a lot. One kind of threading the needle idea would be to return them to the library temporarily pending the review of the policy. And then after the, the new policy has been completed and finalized, then we could review that decision to put the, the books back in the library. But, you know, there are a number of pros and cons there. I think, I've mentioned the pros. One of the cons is that there's a little bit of a, a shadow around it or like it's kind of hanging around rather than final, right? And so I, I will admit that I've, I've come down on the side of really making this a final gesture tonight, as I would reflect in my vote. Because I do think that the policy was not written very well, it did not set up our committee for success, in my opinion. I think the way that it was written, it was not helpful in certain ways, and I think there are lots of ways that it can be improved. So I want to say that. A couple of other things. I think that the option to, I think separating the policies in terms of the purview of each is a good idea. I don't think the, I don't, I have mixed feelings about getting rid of the provision for parents to contest a book. I think there should be some channel, but maybe we can think more about what that channel is rather than what it is right now. I would certainly want it to be more like a petition personally, or just a much more, like the bar should be higher, I think. Age appropriateness was brought up. I think Ms. Stern summarized it perfectly, that we can agree generally on the idea of age appropriateness. There are certain books that we wouldn't think are appropriate for an elementary school student or a middle school student, right? So I, I think that, that idea is not wacky, right? But I do think that we, we do maybe need to consider age appropriateness on the one hand, but civil liberties on the other and freedom of speech. And I think that that kind of, kind of overweighs it. I want to wrap up. Thank you for your time. I know I've taken up a lot of time, but I want to wrap up from an excellent article in a publication that, I don't read that often, but I was, again, doing a lot of reading and reflecting on this particular issue. And I found an article, and I just want to get the, the name of the author correct here. I found the article in The New Yorker, and it was from last, two years ago, in 2023. My scholarly habits have failed me because I usually try to note the exact date, but the author's name is Katie, K-A-T-Y Waldman, W-A-L-D-M-A-N. And the article is called, What Are We Protecting Children From By Banning Books? I think it's a very well-written article and very good. I- I, it resonated a lot because of the current issue. And I, I want to end on just a section of the article, if you will. And the first paragraph really resonated with me and kind of summarized how I went into this process. So, "Knowledge is power, but it can also age you, make you vulnerable and afraid. Wishing to protect children from the realities of adult life, grubby, earthbound, disappointing, for at least a little while, is deeply human. Kids mature at different rates, and it's not unreasonable for the parents of 12-year-olds to want to keep their own children from reading the same books as 18-year-olds." So to me, again, that paragraph really summed up how I went into things. The second paragraph, I've tweaked a little bit, just for the sake of, I think some of the language is a little, little harsh, I tweaked the, the verbs a little bit. For those of you grammar nerds, I sort of made a shift from the indicative to the subjunctive. So this, this second paragraph, and it's sequential in the article. "But a glance at the list of most frequently banned books makes clear that, quote unquote, 'mature' content can be a fig leaf. What some parents and advocacy groups are challenging in these books is difference itself. For them, in their vision of childhood, a green, sweet-smelling land invented by Victorians and untouched by violence or discrimination or death, white, straight, and cisgender characters are G-rated. All other characters, meanwhile, come with warning labels. When childhood is racialized, cisgendered, and de-queered, insisting on age-appropriate material can become a way to instill doctrine and foreclose options for some readers and to evict other readers from childhood entirely. A number of grown-ups apparently feel emboldened to spend their lives playing peek-a-boo with reality. Their kids may not have that luxury." So again, I think excellently written. Finally, I just want to say I, I regret and I'm sorry for any unintentional harm that I've caused any child in this community or families. The last thing that I would ever want to do is make a child in this community feel unwelcome and that they don't belong. So, thank you for your time.
So much of what I'm going to say is going to echo a lot of what we've heard. I first and foremost want to thank all the people who have come out, really, I mean, Ms. Luce, you said since February 25th, you, you know, your emotion, your passion, your eloquence, and I have found particularly, you know, I'm, Mr. Moore asked for our opinion, so I'm going to give them to you, quickly, but, and I do want to comment on policy because of where I'm going to go with this, and, and I don't serve on the policy committee, so, and I want to say another thank you to all of you who have been to those policy meetings because, and to the curriculum with your comments, because I really think they've informed my thinking and they've expanded, like, my perspectives and I think, you know, such constructive feedback. I mean, Ms. Perkins, you're so great with your, you know, you say you're a policy nerd, well, you know, terrific. We, we've really benefited from that and suggestions, and I have, my thinking really has evolved on the policy front, and I want to share it with, you know, the committee because I'm not on that committee. I think originally I was trying to figure out, how do we develop this, you know, because I hear you loud and clear, the, we had a flawed policy and we had a flawed process because, because of it. And, and I completely agree with you. And so I was trying to think, how do we develop a challenge policy that can, you know, and I'm going to say, this isn't a little item, this is a big deal to our public commenter, this is a big deal. So how do we address and how do we, you know, make sure that it's expressing our values, that we're, and I gotta tell you, I find it really hard to find how we do that, because, you know, we said it today, I think it's a ton of work for the administration. I think, how do you ensure the makeup of that committee? How, you know, you know, we want a student voice, we want to be transparent. I mean, I just see it so flawed, and I think it came to, my evolution of thinking is really, why does one person have the right to set this in motion? Why does one person get to? And, and that, and, and so I really, I'm coming with our other public commenter, I've come to think that we should remove the challenge. And I, but I also want to make clear, I also wholeheartedly support and believe that a parent has the right to determine what their child has access to. They just don't have the right to say what every child has access to. So, so, so I, you know, for what it's worth, policy committee, that's how I feel, I, I think that is, I, I'm really wrapping my head around that, and I would love to see a policy. I'm glad that we're going down the route of looking at that in a first draft, and I, I've, you know, people have followed policy before, other, you know, decisions we make weren't, you know, governance is slow. I said this in the curriculum meeting. And, and in many ways, govern, there's a reason for that. It allows us to fully vet things. It allows us to evolve our thinking, get different perspectives, you know, really have robust dialogue and conversation and better decision-making. And, and I think the process, and I'm, and I'm, but I do think we've been moving pretty swiftly, because I think we heard you, and, and we're set next policy meeting to look at a first read, and then we, you know, we, you know, if all goes smoothly, we could be at, as we said, you know, a January 10th or January 9th, whatever, that business meeting, with a, an approved policy. June, sorry, what did I say? January, ooh. So, you know, I, I, and this is the part that you've heard me say in curriculum, and, and believe me, this isn't easy for me to come with, because I've, I've expressed that, you know, I see the val, I've read the books, you know, you don't need me to say that out loud, read the books, and I find value. And, and honestly, the biggest value is they made me think about something that I have no experience with, and gain a lot of empathy for different life-lived experiences. And, you know, that's what literature should do. And so, so, but, but I also believe, you know, and I did a little Google, because, you know, in preparing, I was like, now, what is the primary responsibility of a school board director? You know, and I've done this before, but it is our policymaking role, is to set policy, and that policy governs our decision-making. And, and it's, it's actually to set new policy or revise policy. That's what it said, right, when it came right up, you know, from a Google search. And, and I truly believe that, and I agree with Mr. Thornton, we set, the good governance is taking the time to set the policy and then make this decision. And, and because it will be rooted in a policy. And, you know, I, I do get, you know, Ms. Stern saying, well, we, what if we remove the challenge? Well, right there, we've removed the challenge. That is, that is set in policy. It is a decision based on policy. So I just think it's more enduring in the long run if we take the time and, and to your, to the point of that, you know, at, we will not be up here. You know, right now you have, I'm, if I gauge it right, you've got a pretty simpatico board, with everyone believes these books have merit and that we don't want to be in the business of removing books. So I just want to make sure that we're in a position that we have something that is enduring. And so I, I, and I heard, and I heard from the community loud and clear that we want, you know, that we have a flawed process. And so let's do that work, and then let's, I, I'm also reading the board, and I don't think we're going to have, you know, we might make that decision tonight. So, you know, what to do, but I, I hope you respect, that's where I'm coming from, because I think that the best governance is when we let, we make the policy, and then we let, we make our decisions based on that policy. And I think the very fact that, you know, we are, we are doing it as an expression of our values. That policy is an expression of our values and our beliefs. And, and so, you know, I know, I want Ms. Dunn to be able to make comments right now, and then, you know, we can take it from there.
Okay. I have not been in any of the committees that have talked on this publicly. I have seen or listened, no, I have seen either in person or online, every public comment that has been made on this. And I really, I want to thank everybody. I want to start by thanking our students. I think we live in a time where it can be really difficult, even for adults, to come out and speak truth to people in authority, and to ask for what you want, and to admit that you're different, or that you, that something that those adults have done have made you feel different. And I'm going to tell you, some of those public comments, even tonight, a couple you almost got me, have made me cry. So I want to echo Dr. Babson, and I think I can echo the board, if having this policy in place has created a situation that harmed anyone in this community, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I sat on a board that knew this policy was in place and trusted that it would work out the way I always wanted it to. Thank you to the student who came and said, "You are elected to represent our values, and by not talking about this and not making a decision on this, you fail to do that." It, it hurt, and it was very, very true. So thank you to everyone who has come and done that. It's important for all of us to hear from you. Sometimes we think we know what you're thinking. Ms. Stern pointed out her phone, so she stole my thunder a little bit, but I want to point out to the board, we have a situation where we're all always talking about cell phones, should they be in classrooms, should we remove them, should they have, should they be gone all day? We're worried about cell phones, and we have a group of kids demanding we put back books in the library. How ironic. So I want you to think about that tonight when we vote. Are you going to tell kids they can't have their books back? I, 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 most of you who come to these meetings or who watch any of them know, I rarely come with notes. I speak contempor, extemporaneously, I just kind of know what I have. This situation, since before any of you knew about it, since I heard these books were going to be removed from the library, and I told Dr. Bachelor, I apologize, but we're going to have this discussion publicly, because I'm really upset about it, has been waking me up. It keeps me up at night, I'm awake till 1:00 in the morning some nights, and it wakes me up. Last four mornings I have been up around 4:08. And I've been up at that hour, board members, trying to figure out what I'm doing wrong that anybody doesn't want to put these books back tonight. And, and I say that as a lawyer who really values policy and process. I genuinely, genuinely do, and I, and I respect differences, I, I want to disagree without being disagreeable, but I feel very strongly that one decision on a set of books was one decision under an existing policy, and that the new policy is a separate issue. We have the authority currently, so we have the authority currently, under state law, to put books in the library or take books out. I mean, we could be sitting here just as easily, so keep this in mind when you vote, taking books out of your library. That is the same authority we will have if we wait until June to decide whether to put these books back in the library then, once a policy is done. And by the way, I know we all want it done by June, but we don't all always agree. So it may not be done in June, and the policy committee may be here in July, looking at this policy. And then we're going to explain to a group of students that they graduated with those books still out of the library, because we didn't think we should put the books back until after we had the policy. I come from a family that's actually politically conservative and socially liberal. My mother called me and said, I've seen this in the news, why are those books out of the library? Put them back. And I come from a family of physicians, where the rule, for most of you will know, is first do no harm. And when I saw a student, and I'm not going to name her, but she's going to know who she is, when she said, "I came out at 13, and I never felt unwelcome or judged in this community until these books were removed from the library, and I felt like who I am wasn't something that was appropriate for my peers or in this community," that broke my heart. So I want to tell you about each of these books, because I don't think it's fair to judge them as a group. Gender Queer, I read the last time it was challenged, and it stayed in the library. It is a book about a young person struggling with their gender identity and struggling with every community trying to label them, and saying, "You belong to us," or "You belong to them, you belong here, you belong there," instead of just saying, "You belong." And I didn't struggle with that at that age, but boy, did it make me understand some of my family members and the struggles they must have gone through. And I reached out to each of them after reading that book and said, "If I ever made you feel less of this family, or less a human being, please, please forgive me." I read Blanket, uh, I read Blankets Next, that was a heavy one. And thank you to Main Point Books for ordering it for me, because it was sold out in this And I didn't align with that book as much, you know, I, I think a lot of people struggle with their religion when they're in high school. To me, that book was a lot about struggling with religion and secrets and quiet. It was about struggling with new relationships. It was a struggling about with kind of how to express yourself in those relationships. And it, it was a good book. Again, it belongs in our library. Fun Home, I have a law degree, and I did have to look up the words. And it is, it is not just, I mean, it is also, in some ways, it's an English paper. It is, you know, it's comparing this person's life, this author's life, with Ulysses. I mean, there are like genuine references. If you are not a well-read person, and I struggled with some of this, and I think of myself as a well-read person, it's hard to get through, you're like, wow, I should go read some of these classics, because I would understand this better, and I will appreciate it more the second time. But one of the really important lessons from Fun Home is about the author's daughter, author's father, who couldn't be himself in a country that didn't allow, at a time when we didn't allow people to be different. And by different, I mean anything other than straight and white. And that changed the course of his life, and not in a good way. And I think a lesson for all of this community and for the board is that not allowing people and honoring who people are by allowing them to see themselves in books is harmful. It, it's not, it's not just another month or two to some people. To some people, it's today. I, I support our librarians. I also worry about the future. What if we don't always have these fabulous librarians who craft these fabulous collections for our students? And that's where all of you come in. You all need to know what's in the library. You all need to talk to your students about what they're reading. And if they're reading things you don't like, you have the authority to go to the administration and ask them not to allow your student to read it. I will agree, the first thing I would do anytime my mother told me, if she had ever said to me, "Don't read a book," I would have found a way to get that book. So be careful what you wish for. I, I just, I think these books are, are memoirs about real struggles that our students have. You've all said this, but I felt it when I read them. It's not, it's not just academic, right? I read them and I went, oh, I want, oh, that would really hurt. Oh, I remember being a teenager and struggling with that. And I don't think it hurts people to know that other people struggle. I, in high school, was reading, I was reading The Lords of Discipline by Pat Conroy, which is not a memoir. And I saw, I started sobbing on the bus, I remember, I was on a school trip, and one of my friends said, "What are you crying about?" I said, "I'm crying for Pat Conroy." And she said, "What do you mean?" I said, "His father's a terrible abusive alcoholic." And she said, "Sarah, it's not a, it's a, it's a, it's a novel, it's not a memoir." And I said, "No. If you've had, if you've lived with an alcoholic, you would know." And she said, "No, no, authors are really capable, they craft things that aren't their life experience." And I said, "I, I believe that, and I believe Pat Conroy might genuinely be that talented, but I'm going to tell you, I have an insight into what his house was like growing up." And he did eventually come out and admit that. So I think I, that was what I found in these books, was I have that moment for myself of the first time I saw in a book something I understood personally. And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell a child that it's okay to wait two more months. So the, I, I know the next thing that's coming is a, a request to potentially table this or move it, and, and I respect that. I'm obviously not going to vote for it. I just would ask anybody who is going to vote for it to ask yourself before you do, what could we put in that policy that would make you change your mind? You all said you think these books go back in the, belong in the library. What, what about this new policy? in the, belong in the library. What, what about this new policy requires you to wait two months, three months, four months? To the policy committee, I'm all for saying, no one parent has the right to remove books. So, if you want to draft something in that direction, it sounds like you might have enough people to go for that. And to the community, I heard somebody joke, "This is a kind of weird book club." I'm looking for a good book club. I hope there's wine. And I do hope that you all find comfort in, in book clubs with each other over this event. It's up to you. I, I don't want to say you can't do it. I just...
I'm not, I can kind of read the tea leaves that we're not going to get a, but I, I can make, I will make a motion to table the vote until after the policy is complete, and then we would take the vote. And, and I can just also, again, say, you know, I, I really, you know, I want respect on that. You know, I'm asking for the respect that we, there are some of us that really feel that we are better suited if we're grounded in the policy and that we do the policy work first. And, and I want the, and I want the means to justify the end. And I feel like, in some ways, we're asking the, you know, the, the end will justify the means. And again, that is, you know, I, I just think it, you know, I stated it before. I just think that it's stronger and more enduring and will live past the time when we might not have this vote. And, you know, it is our opinion on these books, and, and I, you know, I, I want it to be a reflection of more than just our individual opinions, and, and I want to do the work, and I want the policy to reflect our values and, and have, you know, lasting impact, so.
If it helps you, I did find, and I forgot these because I, I wrote down everything, and I forgot to write this. I just had my phone out. Policy 11, Policy 011, talks about the standards for effective school governance and says that to promote student growth and achievement, an effective school board advocates for a thorough and efficient system of public education by, number two, engaging and promoting community support by seeking input, building support networks, and generating action. I think we have that here. And then, it separately in sec, so just give me a second. It separately, in the same policy, says that we ensure effective planning occurs by linking board actions to annual goals. And I really feel strongly the belonging is one of our annual goals, not just our mission. And I, I think that's what, I think that's what I'm asking the board to do here.
Right. And, and, excuse me?
So, and I appreciate, we're not going to, yeah, we're not going to engage with the public. This is, we just got to talk up here. But, so you don't have to make the motion to table, but if you would like to make the motion to table, I will certainly honor that.
Ms. Dunn, I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
If we do take a vote to reinstate the books in the library tonight, what prevents someone tomorrow morning from filing a challenge again?
So, that's a great question, and you're not the first person to ask it. Technically, the policy requires its superintendent to form an ad hoc committee. Another flaw in the policy is it doesn't give a set of timing. I think it would be, I think it would be foolish to rush to try and form an ad hoc committee to review one of these books tomorrow when it's very clear to everyone who's paid any attention to the community that this policy is under review and is going to change. We don't know what the outcome will be, but it is going to change. I, I can ask our solicitor, is there a specific time? There's nothing I've seen in the policy that requires us to do that timely?
There's, there's no timeline in the policy.
So, it would be, it would not be unreasonable for the administration to wait to deal with a book until there is a new policy in place. Deal with a book challenge, I'm sorry.
Well, the, the, a new challenge should be dealt with in the same way that the past challenges have been dealt with. Along the same, the same process should be followed. Nothing should be changed until the, the existing policy has been changed.
Okay, but it's not, it doesn't mean the very same day. I mean, we don't form a, forming a committee takes a couple of weeks, getting everybody on, together on time. I mean...
Yeah, I, I don't remember how, what the, what the timeline was the last time, but my recollection is that it took a little bit of time between the time that the challenge came in till the time that the actual committee was formed. I, I don't know what the exact timeline was, but obviously, it can't be done, you know, instantly.
So, if, if a concern is also, so let's say, a challenge was filed tomorrow. Could the board put it on the agenda next month to suspend that policy pending resolution of the new policy?
Yeah, the board has the power to suspend policies, so you could certainly suspend a policy without coming up with a new policy to, to replace it with.
So, I mean, it's not something we can do tonight because it wasn't advertised on the agenda, and we want to follow the process.
It was not on the agenda tonight, so it can't be done tonight.
But, but if that's a concern of board members here tonight, it's something I could commit to putting on the agenda next month.
My concern is that I want this issue to be finalized, and if we make a Band-Aid solution tonight, I think it opens up further discussion, further challenges down the road. I want this to be done correctly and properly, not knee-jerk reaction. We've made one mistake already. I don't want to make two.
We, we actually didn't make a mistake.
Well, when I say make a mistake, the policy was flawed and the procedure was flawed. We've agreed to that. That's the mistake that was made.
I actually take exception to that. I'm not sure the policy was flawed. We just don't agree with the outcome of that decision with regard to these three books.
I think we've, a lot of people have said the policy was flawed.
So, I think we're going to look at the policy.
Absolutely.
And I think it's a separate issue, though, to me, than putting the books back in the library. I think there's a lot of different opinions on the policy. And I think, how do I say this? I think it's a little bit hiding behind not doing the right thing by saying, "Oh, well, the policy," you know. To me, I don't, I don't agree with the outcome where it stands now. I don't believe in banning these three books, and so I want to fix that. And then, whatever else comes after that, it, you know, is work to be done, but I certainly don't want to muck around waiting for that to happen. I think it should happen, but I think we have differences of opinion on that. So, I don't want to confuse the two issues. To me, that's confusing them.
Mr. Kristofko, could I ask a, a point about the current policy?
Sure.
DJ, I, I really do appreciate the concern. I actually raised this with Ms. Dunn this afternoon because I do like to try to think about where could things go. So, my question to Mr. Kristofko is, until we do a second read of a change to Policy 144, regardless of what we do with these three particular books, until we change Policy 144.1, in whatever fashion we might change it, we, we are subject to any book challenges. It, it could be another book, a different book. It doesn't have to be these three. That's just the reality. We are under no obligation, I'm very familiar with the policy, Mr. Kristofko, we are under no obligation in, in the timeline of when Mr., when Dr. Bachelor would form an ad hoc committee, and I think I said this at a couple of policy meetings, you know, people have been put on notice. They are aware that the, that the board in the, in the district is, is undertaking a review of these policies. I could imagine that it would actually be a reasonable reply on behalf of Dr. Bachelor, whether these three books were challenged or any other book was challenged, to notify anybody who submits a challenge, "The policy is under review, and we will take up this matter when the review of the policy is complete." Because we're under no timeline obligation to, to form an ad hoc committee in any particular timeframe. Am I, is my understanding correct?
There is no timeline in the policy. However, until the policy is revised, it stays in place, and in, any new challenge should be treated exactly as the prior challenges have been treated.
Right.
So, the board can, if it wants, suspend the current policy at the next board meeting while you develop a new one, but in the meantime, the policy's there. It, it require, it's required to be followed, and it should be followed in the same way it's been followed in the past.
Okay. That, I will just offer that. My concern with suspending the policy is it actually provides predominantly for the selection of library materials. I wouldn't want to hamstring our librarians from selecting library books for the library.
So, that was actually my follow-up question, is, does the board have the authority to suspend a portion of a policy as opposed to an entire policy?
The, the board policy that tells you, you have the authority to suspend, it doesn't get, go into detail. It just says you have the authority to suspend, revise, propose policies, et cetera. So, it doesn't say the, it doesn't specifically define. I would view that as saying, yes, you could suspend part of a policy and say, "We're going to suspend this section of a policy." That would be my advice.
But this is all hypothetical, folks. Like, there's a, something that needs to get corrected, and then all of this, you know, legalese, that hasn't happened yet, and so if that does happen.
Ms. Solomon, I think the question is, I think this helps certain people understand how their vote affects broader situations.
Right. And, but I'm still making the point that that hasn't happened. So, I, I'm glad we cleared up, you know, what our options are, but it hasn't happened.
I just have a, a follow-up question. So, if tonight, we reinstate the books, tomorrow, someone has another challenge, and then the next board meeting, the board suspends the , the policy, what happens to a challenge that's already in process?
Well, if the policy under which the challenge is brought is suspended or repealed, then it, it ends there because unless, unless it's been concluded, it just ends because that there's now no longer a, a process under which it can proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah.
Do I, yes, go ahead.
Just a few things. From where I see it, I think there are so many flaws in the current policy that one could, that, that it does cast into question the strength, some could say the validity, but I won't go that far, but the strength of the, of the process itself. That coupled with the force and the, and I will say the welcome response from the public on this, I think those are the two main factors in my mind to push for a quick resolution to this beyond the substantive issues at hand around access and freedom of speech and, and everything that we've discussed there. So, I, I just want to put it there. There was, I just want to recap an idea I mentioned earlier, which is something that I thought of, which is to put the books back in the library immediately, but with a proviso that it's temporary pending the completion of the, of the review and/or revision of the, of Policy 144.1. But I'm just going to repeat what I said earlier, which is that I think the importance of having this be final right now overweighs that, overweighs whatever benefit could come from that. Thanks.
Dr. Babson, I hear what you're saying, but my point is, it won't be final. There's going to be more action after this. And, and less we think about this in the long term, we're going to be dealing with this constantly.
I, I, I agree. And, you know, this is something as, as part of the policy committee, you know, this is something that I've, and by the way, all of us board members, at some point or another, we do have individual conversations with each other, which are permitted under sunshine. And all, and all of you know that I've talked with all of you at some length about aspects of this. So, we do, as I said earlier, we have to consider process and precedent in an open and uncertain future about who will be on a future administration or a future board. I, I really do understand this, and I've wrestled with this particular issue. However, I think the timeline issue that Ms. Stern has brought up and underlined several times, I think, is crucial to this. In other words, if there were a strict timeline that called for an immediate process to kick into place, then that would be one thing. But there is literally no timeline. This could languish, or pick another word that doesn't have that connotation, this could sit and just kind of be there for indefinitely. There's literally no timeline that we have to take up the issue. So, in other words, we could let it sit there as, as, now, you could make the argument that that, you know, bring in another word, fester, it could fester. It could cause tension in the community, et cetera. But again, what's the greater good? So, just some thoughts.
It's our responsibility to expedite the process and the policy, so I...
And we are going to expedite the, the policy process, but we're going to do it properly. So, if it takes two first reads, it's going to take two first reads. I don't think we should, I think we, the policy has been around long enough. We've all agreed, except maybe Mrs. Solomon, that there are some significant problems with, Ms., there are problems with it, and it needs to be revised. Maybe it needs to be split. I think there's a lot to review. And so, it's possible that the first policy comes to the full board, and the board has feedback and sends it back for another first reading. And so, that's my concern from a timing standpoint.
I, I don't want the idea to be out there that I think the policy is just fine. What I'm saying is, I do think parents should have a right to challenge material. I think that's very important. So, what I'm saying is, I think the policy debate should be separate from what we do with the books because I think it's a different issue, and I think that it involves, you know, different set of considerations, and it will take a lot longer.
And Ms. Solomon, I don't think you're the only person here who, who thinks that. I think you've seen an array of opinions on what belongs in that policy, which is one of my concerns about holding up the books for the, the final policy. I certainly have no problem making a motion next month or putting it on agendas next month to suspend the policy that's in place if that would address some of Mr. Thornton's concerns. I, I echo those concerns. I, I think I was relying a little bit on the timing aspect or the lack of a timing requirement in the policy, but having more clarity that we need to make sure it doesn't languish or fester. I appreciate your concerns, and I'm, I, we can put that on next month's agenda. I have to figure out which pol, which committee it would go through. Oh, it would go through policy.
Ms. Dunn, I'm, I'm loathe to, to extend this too long here, but I, I just want to, I want to bring up something that I think is, is important. And, you know, I think that we can, I think that we can consider whether or not, going forward, well, let me just, I'm just going to hold off and collect my thoughts a little bit further on what I was just going to say. I'll defer to someone else. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Certainly.
If the, if the books go back on the shelf today, if, if that's done, and then we go through the process of revising this policy, does that, you know, give us leeway to extend the process because the three books will have gone back to the library shelves?
So, I don't want to say that we're going to take away any of the urgency of trying to correct the policy, but yeah, I think it might make some people, and I don't want to speak for everybody, I think there are people who might feel more urgency about getting the policy done, and I want the board and the policy committee first to do the policy the right way. And so, I, that, that's part of my point in separating the policy itself from these books. And, and from a governance standpoint, I think that the suspension solves some of that, although I recognize it doesn't solve all of your concerns. But does that answer your timing question?
No.
So, maybe say it again in a different way?
So, if, if, if we want to revise this, the policy to potentially bring the books back, right? If the books are already back, then why, then why are we rushing to get the policy done? Or why are we trying to?
I, I think we're, we're not rushing, but we're, we're pushing to get the policy done because I think a majority of the board thinks there's a problem with it.
Right.
And we are, we want to honor the requests of the community to review the policy. I think it sounds like there's going to be an array of conversations about what belongs in that policy and what's appropriate and what's not. So, and I think that needs to be done in a deliberate way.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just going to say, just with regard to the policy alone, I'm so sorry. I assure the board, I've chaired policy many years. I will take this policy through the committee in a, in an efficient and appropriate manner. It's not going to languish. It's not going to be rushed. You will, and I'm, and that's why I made such a full report of policy because I wanted all nine of you, as well as the community, to be on full notice. Pay attention to the meeting that's going to happen in May. Read the materials, which I know you do. know you do, watch the meeting, attend the meeting, what have you, because we're going to move forward with the policy. And I know everybody wants to be really up to speed on the various points. And then we're going to go forward.
So I want to just, I think, change what you, the way you stated this. I don't think we're changing the policy to get the books back in the library. We've had this policy for a long time. Challenges have gone through this policy. Um, and it hasn't ended in this kind of uproar. So something happened here we should correct. We have the authority to do that, and we, I think it's unanimous that we want to do that. The policy debate is separate. It could be that a challenge is put forth tomorrow, it could be that another committee is convened under the same policy and comes up with a completely different result. So I think you guys are looking for an absolute protection that, these are really thorny, difficult issues. I don't think there's ever going to be that absolute to it, that, oh, you know, I think there, we may come across material that, I can think of, you know, pornography truly, that we don't want in our libraries. Like, I, I think you're looking for a comfort level that doesn't exist, but I think we should look at this particular issue separately. The policy is not, I'm not looking at the policy to fix this. Uh, because that committee could have come up with a completely different...
I'm going to rephrase that, because I'm not, I don't, I don't want to, you know, assume that we're creating a policy to meet, to serve our purpose.
Okay, I thought I heard you saying you want to fix the policy to get the books back in the library. And that's, I don't think what the policy is going to do for you.
Let me just rephrase, let me just rephrase that. If the books go back on the shelves today, if we vote that they go back today, are we committed to work on the, the policy in the right way, but, but in an efficient way so that it doesn't linger?
Absolutely, that's what Ms. Stern just committed to, and the, and she's chair of policy, so I, and you all heard it here, so we're going to hold her to it.
Okay, because the discussion about it lingering past, you know, you had mentioned that it could linger past three or four months.
I, I would hope it's not more than three or four months, but the reality is, I'm hearing an array of com, of opinions here. And I think this is a policy that's very, it's clearly important, and the committee's going to have to take all that into account. So, Ms. Thornton, I'm sorry. That's all right. Ms. Gerton?
I don't have the answer to this, but is it possible that we potentially undermine the bigger issue of how we feel about the policy of censorship by voting, so if we vote today to put books back on the shelf and then, okay, good, that's good, but then do we undermine what comes next for the future? That, I, I think that's what DJ was trying to get at, and I, I don't know if I have the answer, but I'm just curious if perhaps we might be.
I think the ans, I think your answer as to censorship is, is more appropriately dealt with as to the policy instead of these three books. So if we think these three books belong in the library, we can deal with that under state code. And if we think, or if certain people on the board think, no, actually, the, it should be okay for someone, for there to be book challenges, and we want to allow that, and we don't consider it censorship, we consider it, you know, input from the community, that's what would go in the policy. If you genuinely believe in never banning books, as long as they're not illegal to have in a school library, that's a separate policy. I think these are policy conversations. And that's why I've been saying, I think we need to separate the books from the policy, because I think these are, these are books that were removed under one, one review of the policy and one ad hoc committee. I mean, one of these books was kept by an ad hoc committee two or three years ago and, and removed by this ad hoc committee, or recommended for removal. So I, I mean, these are conversations that are coming up, and those I think are thoughts to have in the process of reviewing a new policy. But I don't think, I mean, I'm open to hearing it, but I don't think that we create censorship by refuse, by putting the books back. I don't think we... But maybe, did I not hear your question the right way? I mean, Chair Dunn?
I don't know if I have a total answer. That is an answer, but I'm just curious if perhaps we might be undermining by, I mean, these are just three books. There's 18 million books. Um, and the bigger issue is how do we feel about appropriate materials and censorship? And if, if that's a bigger discussion that I think we can vet through while it keeps our feet to the fire for policy, and then we...
So I think Ms. Stern, I, I, no, and I, please, we're going to try and respect our rules. We, we don't converse with the community when we're, we're having debate. I think Ms. Stern, I think we all know she can be quite a taskmaster. She takes that as the biggest compliment. So I don't think there's going to be any delay in getting this through policy. I think the delay will be genuinely because we're all having these types of conversations. So my apologies to the administration, you may want to prepare, prepare for some late nights. But I think it's important that we're having these conversations. I, I don't mean that at all in a flip way, but I think that, it sounds to me like maybe your concern is how the, how the next policy is written to make sure we don't end up in a censorship setting, or we don't put books in that we don't think are appropriate. Um, and we is a question, right? That's also goes in the policy. Is it a policy that's going to have an ad hoc committee if you want to allow a challenge, right? Should there be an ad hoc committee? Is it just administrators? Do we say, no, it's always the librarian? Do we say any challenge has to go through the full board? I think this is part of what Mrs. Duffy was saying when we started thinking about this, and one of the things that's keeping me up, gosh, how do you write that? And, you know, does every board meeting end up being a full book review of all, you know, the 60 books that got you? Exactly. That's, that's not what we're here for. So I think that's one of the things that we may find appealing about just saying, no, if you don't want your kid to read a book, you call the school and tell them they can't take it out of the library. I would go further and say, so, well, I actually would go further and say, because I don't want it to be a gotcha for librarians, if you don't want your child to take out a book, you and your child sign the form that they can't take it out of the book, the library. Because I think the child, any high school student should be responsible to know what they're not allowed to do under their parent's rules. And whether or not they follow them, as we all know as parents, is a whole other issue. Um, but I think that that's, you know, that's how I would write that, but I'm not on policy, so we'll see what comes out of there. I heard, hold on a second, I saw Ms. Lau when I turned my...
Sorry, I just want to reiterate that we've received a formal legal opinion from our solicitor who tells us that proper procedure and good governance, um, and if we are, you know, interested in reversing the ad hoc committee's decision, would be to take a full board vote. And that authority existed before the ad hoc committee even convened. It still exists now. And actually, any new or revised policy would not give us that authority, because that policy would be prospective and not retroactive to any, um, decision that was made before the new policy was put in place. So, you know, I, I heard a lot of arguments about, let's follow procedure, proper procedure and good governance. I'm all for that. I'm a lawyer. Um, but I think our solicitor is telling us that proper procedure would actually be a full board vote. And, and that a new policy wouldn't apply to the decision of the ad hoc committee that has already been rendered.
Well, we're going to have to take a full board, full, eventually. I mean, I'm not arguing that. You know, we, we will get to that point. It's a matter of, yes, we have the authority, it's, should, you know, the question that I'm struggling with is should we wield that authority before we've revised the policy? So yes, no matter what, we're going to take a full, full, it's just, you know, what comes first, you know? And that, and that's what I've been struggling with. You know, because, again, just, I, you know, I believe they're all good governance. I have confidence that everyone here wants to provide good governance.
I guess I don't see the additional value of waiting, because it were actually, to me, it's not all good governance. Like, I think good governance is, like, you know, taking a full board vote. And it wouldn't be taking the vote based on a new policy, because that new policy actually doesn't apply in the situation.
What if we remove the challenge? You know, I mean, like, you could, it just, that's your opinion. Okay, like, so, so I'm, I'm, what?
No, I actually asked our solicitor, if you remove the challenge from the policy, it doesn't mean that these books automatically go back. We have to take a separate vote.
No, of course not. We still have to take a vote. I'm recognizing we have to take a vote. So, um, you know, what I'm struggling with is just precedent. Like, you know, when, when we get a decision that we don't like and we overturn it, you know, like, the, like, what's to prevent another board from doing that, you know, in the future? So there's another decision that's made and we overturn it. They, so...
Those people prevent it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, elections, yeah. I mean, that already exists. I mean, a new board could undo all of this, you know, next year. That's just the reality. That's why we have elections.
I agree with that.
I want to make up one other point clear, because I think maybe Janie and I think of it this way as lawyers, and we haven't pointed it out. And that is, the same is within a district, there's a hierarchy, and if somebody makes a decision, somebody else has the authority to overrule it, somebody else has the authority to overrule that. The laws are kind of stacked the same way. So policy is ours, but the law is above the policy. And so the same way we can't adopt a policy that violates the law, the, the law always trumps the policy. So it's not bad governance to say state law gives us this authority. And I understand we're talking about when to exercise it. But, but my point is, policies don't have to say, you could overturn this by using a state law, because that's inherent in every policy. We can overturn any decision by any policy as long as it's not illegal, probably under state code. So I think that's, that's maybe where we're kind of thinking with legal brains, that I, I was realizing maybe we haven't clarified that for other people from a structure of governance standpoint. The same way a policy, you know, stacks on top of an administrative regulation, the code stock stacks on top of the policy. And that maybe, it may not help you, but that's, I think, where I go with it.
And I was relying on the opinion of our solicitor for that, because I didn't know that either, as a new board member, so.
Just quickly, if you don't mind. Um, go ahead, Lydia.
Well, I was going to call the question, so.
Well, I had a, I had a, I had a couple of quick points to make, and then we can proceed. It's late. But, you know, there's debate, I, I'm seeing a debate about whether or not the decision of our committee was a function of a bad policy or not. And there are agreements that we made to not discuss, you know, the deliberations of that committee. But I will give you my personal opinion, which is that I think that the policy has some serious weaknesses. For example, there's not even an appeal mechanism in the policy. I mean, that is a glaring omission. Here's, here's another one, okay? And this, I, I got to tell you, I mean, um, if I may, I mean, Michelle, I, I, I am sorry. I mean, I, I do regret some, just not knowing enough about the work that you do and, you know, the, the process that goes on. Um, I, I'm sorry, you know? I should know more about, I should have known more about it. Um, but now I do. And, and so I think that, for example, the librarian should be giving us a 20-minute PowerPoint about how they go through their pro, just educate us, right? Um, or have it just be on us, perhaps, as a board, to edu, be educated about how librarians make decisions, right? I went into that committee meeting, just, this is just one example, I went into that committee meeting not knowing that, not knowing that process. So that would have been very helpful for me as a member of that committee, no matter how I felt about the books. It would, just would have helped make that decision, right? Um, so, I mean, again, I want to reserve more comments when it's not 11 o'clock at night and when we're in the policy meeting itself. Um, but in my opinion, it goes back to this issue of whether you think the policy itself is, is so compromised that, that it just, we're just in this situation and we need to move forward. And that, that's kind of where I am. Thanks.
I'd like to call the question.
Yes, she, well, it is technically called a question. She means yes, she would like us to vote. Okay. Uh, all, so I, the resolution, just to remind everybody, is to put the three books in question back in the library. Uh, all those in favor, say aye?
To put the books...
Sorry.
This table, pending table.
So we need to vote on that first?
It's good, I withdraw, we can vote.
Nope, nobody seconded it.
She didn't, she made a motion, but it wasn't seconded. But I appreciate you catching that. Okay. Okay. So I'm, I'm going to call the vote. Those in favor of placing these, the three books in question back into the Radnor High School library, say aye.
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 Hold on, let me finish the vote, please, and all those opposed? So, there are three just abstaining? Mr. Kristofko, can they abstain?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a six, a vote, six in favor, three abstained. The three abstained are Ms. Gerton, Ms. Lau, and Ms. Duffy. Oh, not Ms. Lau, oh my God, Ms. Rosenblum, Ms. Rosenblum. I've got my ends of the room mixed up. I'm looking my way. Sorry, sorry. Uh, did you get all that, Ms. Klusman? Okay, thank you. We're, you can all stay if you want, but you can also all go celebrate somewhere. The rest is going to go quickly. The next item on the, is the consent agenda. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve items 10.01 through 15.02.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Solomon and Mr. Thornton, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a 9-0 vote on that. Uh, I have to flip pages. The next item is 16, the reports from the board liaisons. Ms. Solomon, do you have a report from the Delaware County Community College?
No report.
Well, that was fast. Okay. Uh, Dr. Babson, do you have a report from the Delaware County Intermediate Unit?
No. I did, but it's okay.
Okay. Um, the Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council, I'm going to keep this simple. Please keep in mind, if any of you want to serve on the Delo, the delegate assembly to PSBA, last year it was Ms. Gerton, Ms. Solomon, and, and me who went. If other people want to go, please step up. We need to appoint people in June, I think, but it's probably better if we get it done sooner. Um, Spring Advocacy Day, if you're interested in going to that, is May 13th, but I think you need to get registered soon. And also, uh, the DCIU Legislative Breakfast with all the other Delaware County school boards that we went to last year was really good, um, is on May 16th. So I don't think I've seen the invitation for that yet, but look for it, because it should be coming up soon.
I can look into that. You should be, you should have gotten, all gotten an invitation to that.
Okay, maybe I just didn't see it in my email, which has been full lately.
I'll double check.
Okay. Uh, PSBA, Mr. Thornton?
No update at this time.
Great, thank you. Um, I had one, before I move on to board announcements, I, we typically do community announcements, and I didn't mention it earlier, because I know we were trying to get to the big topics. Um, I think I emailed folks, but if you're interested, the ABC Bash fundraiser is coming up on Friday, May 9th, I believe?
May 10th.
May 10th, at, is it Friday?
Oh, then it's the 10th. It's the 9th.
It's the 9th, um, at 118 North.
And then RAF's Kentucky Derby Gala is, Tedji, May 3rd, right? I think it's May 3rd. It's, I believe it's Friday, May 3rd. Buy tickets now.
Look for it. Look for announcements in the Radnor Reader.
It's definitely the weekend of the 2nd.
I have it on my calendar, it's the 3rd.
Okay.
Saturday evening.
So board announcements, uh, I think everybody announced when their policy, when their committee meetings would be for May, but the full board will be meeting back here on May 27th at 7:00 PM. Um, I don't see anybody left who's necessarily going to give public comment, but if you feel so inspired, you coming up? Okay, Mr. Moore. You're trying to lose your favored status as a former school board member. No, thank you for coming up. I'm teasing you. He knows I'm teasing him.
There's nothing wrong with voting no on something because you thought it wasn't the right time to consider it. I thought this was the right time to consider this night and make a vote on it, but if you decided not to vote yes tonight because you thought the timing was wrong, there's nothing wrong with that. One more thing. If you want to suspend a policy, I think that also requires something along the lines of equivalent, of a, equivalence of a first read and a second read. I, that's what I thought I saw in our policy three. Um, so that was not on the agenda for tonight. Um, however, I'm a resident or a taxpayer, if you ever wanted to think about suspending, suspending, suspending policy three, suspending the challenge portion of the library policy, that is something you could do potentially tonight or another time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And while I, I know we're trying to get out of here, I actually want to echo Mr. Moore. I fully respect that people have differing opinions. We disagree without being disagreeable, and I don't want anyone to here to think we think any less of you for however you voted. Last item, can I get a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Ms. Solomon.
So moved.
And a second from Dr. Babson.